Janet, can you hear me?
Hello?
Test, test.
You want me to get out here and stand there? I just dropped the thing. You want me to get out here and stand there? Yeah. Got it. Yeah, got it.
Testing my audio. Now it's a cluster by Janet.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Justin.
Oh, great, we're having a meeting.
Oh.
Testing my audio. Now it's a cluster by Janet.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Justin.
Oh, great, we're having a meeting.
Testing my audio. Now it's a cluster by Janet.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Justin.
Oh, great, we're having a meeting.
Yes, just making sure we're ready to go. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I will now call this meeting to order. It is 6:10 PM. City Attorney Langer, please provide findings allowing council members to attend this virtual meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have to address one procedural matter before we begin the meeting tonight. AB 2449 was recently created an opportunity for members of the city council to teleconference into the meeting under the Brown Act if there's just cause or an emergency, a medical emergency, such as contagious illness, disability, childcare needs, travel for official business, or a physical or family medical emergency. In order to use 2449, the members of the body requesting to teleconference must make a request to participate remotely as soon as possible, and the city council must take action on a request to participate remotely. Since we already have the ability for the public to make public comment over the phone and because we already broadcast our meetings over multiple TV and web-based platforms, we're actually able to accommodate this request and meet the Brown Act's technology requirements. If the council members approve the teleconferencing, the members who are participating remotely must keep their cameras on for the entire meeting, announce if there is anyone over 18 years old present in the room with them at the remote location. We will have to stop the meeting if the broadcast is interrupted, and all votes tonight will be taken by roll call. The broadcast might look a little different since we need to keep the teleconferencing members on the screens at all times, and staff has gone ahead and posted their presentations with the agenda materials online so the public can see all presentations at full screen size in case they have trouble seeing the presentations on the screen. So we have two council members who have requested to participate remotely tonight due to medical reasons that prevent them from being present in council chambers. So while this is going to feel a little bit clunky, to do for the first time, this is the exact situation that the bill was intended to cover. So I'm going to need two actions from the council in order to do this tonight. First, we need a motion to add an urgency item to the agenda to add this request to teleconference under AB 2449 to the agenda. An item can be added to the agenda if the item came to the city's attention after the posting of the agenda, which it did. We learned about these medical reasons to request remote participation over the weekend and if the item requires immediate action. Here, the item is needed for the council members to participate in the meeting tonight. There are 36 items of business to be conducted, and the people's business needs to be conducted in a timely fashion. So there's need to take immediate action. If you can make those findings to add the request to teleconference to the agenda tonight, can someone please make a motion in a second and vote on that request, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Heilman.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
Aye.
And Mayor Shine.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we need one more action. So once approved, now the city council must approve the request under AB 2449 to participate remotely. If the council agrees to let the two council members, please make a motion, and the council will take, or the city clerk will take a roll call vote.
So moved.
Thanks. Second.
Wonderful. May I get a roll call, please, city clerk?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Heilman.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
Aye.
And Mayor Shine.
Aye.
I just have a few more things to say, and then I'll let you get to your business. Okay, so Mayor Protem Erickson and Councilmember Byers can participate remotely. Can you please report if there are any individuals 18 years of age or older present with you in the room while you participate? And you're both muted.
I don't think they heard you.
Councilmember Byers, can you hear us?
Can you please unmute yourselves?
Can you let us know if there's anyone over 18 years of age in the room with you while you participate?
Both muted.
There is no one under 18 in my house, only my dog.
Over 18, but...
I can hear you. I'm watching you. My YouTube, though, so you're a little delayed.
Okay.
I was also delayed. I, there's no one with me under the age or 18.
Over the age. Okay. You'll have to keep your cameras on for the whole meeting, so if you need to take a break, please let myself or the city clerk know, and we can let the mayor know to take a recess. Just one more thing. Adjustments to tonight's council meeting necessitates the council members who are participating via teleconference to always be visible. This will impact the WeHo TV broadcast and stream. To facilitate the meeting, the broadcast and stream will use one wide view of the council chamber's public meeting room while the participants are displayed up on the screen. Television staff will be unable to provide close-up shots of individual council members and meeting participants. While this is not ideal viewing experience, this approach maintains adherence to the Brown Act requirements and required for teleconference participation. So thank you in advance for understanding. You may proceed with your meeting now. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Now I'm going to do our land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabriela N'Tongva and Gabriela Kich peoples. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance. Angela De Silva, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I'd actually love to. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam city clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Byers.
They're delayed, so we have to kind of be patient.
It's probably going to be a little clunky, but we'll keep going as long as we can. But she needs to respond. Can you hear us?
President?
Thank you. Councilmember Heilman.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Mayor Protem Erickson.
Mayor Protem Erickson.
We're going to take a...
I'm here.
Okay. We are going to take a quick recess for a few minutes.
Did we finish the roll call?
Oh. Yes, let's finish the roll call before we take a recess. Thank you.
Yeah, you're here.
Yes, I am here.
Test, test.
Yeah, we need to figure out the televising issue.
Reminding me of pandemic times again. Yeah, exactly. Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
Can you hear it? Can you hear it, Janet?
Hi, can people on Zoom hear us? Let us know if you're on Zoom and you can hear us.
So she's getting a signal.
It must be cutting in an hour or something.
No, it's more of a...
And I don't think we can do any of this.
See, that isn't, it doesn't normally come in like that. Let's look at my press trial and say we're being on the screen. Because I think that that box right there needs to say something besides the flash on, flash off. What if we were running it off a regular computer and just previewing it on the screen?
Thank you for correcting that.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Let's see if we did it online. So right now, we're doing it through the...
They can hear us now.
They can hear us now?
They can hear us now.
So it's a computer setting?
Not really, because I'm just moving the...
But they can hear us now.
Can they? Because audio is lagging and saying it's not.
Now it's not working, yeah.
How's it fifth?
Your microphone is not working.
Janet, can you hear me?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Yeah, we can hear her. We can hear her.
Great. I can hear you.
You can hear us now?
Yes.
So can I.
Okay. Okay, we're good.
Wonderful.
Whatever you just said. Do not move it.
Do not change anything about what you just did.
Hear us from here as well.
Don't...
From here, not through any other connection.
Oh, so something that was connected that wasn't supposed to be?
But the audio is not going to be...
That's supposed to be connected. I can turn on that microphone? No. No, they're hearing the room.
Meaning they're hearing the room.
They're not hearing through the mics.
Okay.
So we'll be extra loud.
Ready?
It'll just be messy audio, but that's...
All right, we are coming back from recess at 6:29. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. Madam City Clerk, are there any changes from staff to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. The minutes on item 2B was revised to better reflect comments made by the public. Also, staff is requesting item 5C and 6B be tabled and 4F. Oh, no, I'm sorry, 4F was updated on Friday, but the revisions were included in the agenda, in the posted agenda. So this is just clarification on item 2B and 5C and 6B to be tabled.
5C and 6B are being tabled, correct? Okay, and a clarification on 2C. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, you first said 5B, I thought.
5C.
C, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Do any of my colleagues have any requests for changes to the agenda?
I have some items to possibly move on consent.
Okay.
We'll see how it goes. For those of you at home, just wave. 4A, to move to consent, 4A, update to drag laureate.
I have a question about that.
Okay. 4C, waiver of planning fees, parking credits. Okay. 4E, WeHo Pride 2023. 4F, update on COVID-19 pandemic and city's local emergency. Okay. 5D, as in dog, request for additional funding, WeHo Mishka Festival. And 6A, add Juneteenth to the list of holidays. And then I'd like to pull from consent, to put on excluded consent, 2Q, construction logistics for Robertson Lane project.
Okay. So just also to say it this way tonight, because of the nature of being on Zoom, what I'm actually going to do is call on folks. So I'm going to call on Councilmember Meister, then Councilmember Heilman, and then Councilmember Byers, and then Mayor Protam Erickson. So Councilmember Heilman, do you have any items to put on consent?
It looks like everything that I wanted to move to consent has already been moved to consent.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Byers?
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protam Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. Did we move 5D? The Russian event?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't hear it. And just to make sure, I have it for my notes, we tabled 6B?
Yes, 6B and 5C. And so far, we have 4C. That's been requested to be moved to consent, which is a waiver of planning fees for the reduction of parking requirements for businesses with parking credits and waiver of late fees assessed to program participants. 4E, WeHo Pride 2023. 4F, update on the COVID-19 pandemic and the city's proclaimed local emergency. 5D, request for additional funding for the 2023 Russian-speaking Community Cultural Heritage Month. And 6A, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood adding Juneteenth to the list of holidays, which enforcement of meter violations and violations of time-limited parking zones, peak hour-toe zones, and street sweeping regulations is suspended, designating both the actual day the holiday occurs as well as the day the holiday is observed, and rescinding resolution numbers 24965615-4664 and 15-4675.
Great. If...I don't think I heard 4B.
I actually have some questions and comments on that.
I tried Councilmember Meister, I'm joking. I'm good, man.
Okay.
Mayor, before we approve the agenda, I do have a question on 2S that I may need to pull. The Commissioner item with term limits, I didn't see anywhere in the item when the terms begin. People who have previously served for eight years or however many years, would that count towards the term limits, or is this only perspective?
It was supposed to be perspective, but is that not in there, City?
I didn't see it in there, but...
Yeah, I don't think we actually addressed the question of perspective versus existing terms. We can add that. Let me think about some language to add real quickly.
And maybe we just...let me pull it from consent, and if you get the language, then maybe we can move it back onto consent.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, so...
If there are no other changes, I'll move the agenda as amended?
I'll second.
Wonderful. So we have a motion by Councilmember Heilman, seconded by Councilmember Meister. May we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Erickson?
Aye.
And Mayor Schein?
Aye.
Do any of my colleagues have any adjournment requests this evening?
I do.
Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Michael J.B. Allen, distinguished professor, engaging teacher, accomplished scholar, dynamic, avid hiker, and loving family man who passed away peacefully of natural causes February 25th in his Santa Monica home. Eighty-one years old at his death, he is survived by his wife Elena, sons Ben and Will, sister Patricia, daughters-in-law Claudia and Melanie, grandchildren Paloma, Moses, and Ezra, and dog Wiglaf. We send our deepest sympathies to Senator Allen and his family. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Linda Ann Vanoff. She was a longtime West Hollywood resident who passed away on February 22nd at the age of 65 after an 18-month battle with brain cancer. Vanoff was a renowned photographer with clients including Ed Asner, Joslyn Brando, Tony Shalhoub, and countless others. She is survived by her mother, son, brother, and many aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, and nephews. We extend our condolences to her family and friends. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Heilman, do you have any adjournment motions?
Yes, I'd request that we adjourn in memory of Pearl Briscelli, mother of Angela Briscelli, the communications director at the June Mazer Lesbian Archives. She passed away peacefully on February 28th, 2023. She was a yoga teacher for 40 years, and she is survived by her five children, 11 grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Byers?
Thank you, I have two adjournment motions tonight. First, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Judy Human, a lifelong disability rights advocate who led one of the longest nonviolent occupations of a federal building in American history. These actions paved the way for the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. She became a member of the Clinton administration, served as special counsel to President Barack Obama, and was star in a recent documentary, Crypt Camp. We are all beneficiaries of the inclusive vision Judy held for our society. And finally, I ask that we adjourn in memory of the unhoused community members who lost lives during the recent storms and cold rush across Los Angeles. These lives are still being enumerated, but I want to hold space for the memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protam, do you have any adjournment motions tonight?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I have two tonight. First, Cecilia Goodman, who is grandmother to Joe Goldman, a beloved member of his family. And Joe is a big part of our community here in West Hollywood. As well as, I want to adjourn in memory of Fay Estelle Carsley, who passed away on Wednesday, March 1st, at the 91 years of age. She was grandmother to Cameron Anuma, who was a longtime member of the WeHo family, and we send our condolences to all of them.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and I don't have any adjournment motions this evening. Moving on to presentations, we have one presentation this evening for National Women's History Month. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the month of March is nationally recognized as National Women's History Month, a time to commemorate and reflect upon the many accomplishments of women and the ongoing efforts to achieve equal rights. And National Women's History Month provides the opportunity to recognize and celebrate women's historic achievements, as well as an opportunity to honor women within our communities. And the city has celebrated National Women's History Month for 37 years, and together with its Women's Advisory Board, works to ensure that programming reflecting women's diverse achievements is offered throughout the month, and this year reflects a return to in-person gatherings with community. Activities for National Women's History Month 2023 include collaborations and contributions with the city's Russian-speaking advisory board, the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, along with the city's art division. Highlights include the Women's History Month street pole banners displayed along Santa Monica Boulevard, and unveiling of two new banners honoring community leaders Nadia Sutton and our dear Ruth Williams, who is missed very much. The globes on Santa Monica Boulevard are lit in purple and gold. The month kicked off this past weekend with the city's International Women's Day celebration featuring women composers and mashup contemporary dance company Seventh Annual International Women's Day Dance Festival. Upcoming events include WeHo Reads, crafting literary legacies with noted women writers, Ruth Bader Ginsburg Day, the Seventh Annual Hollywood Now Her Story Awards, West Hollywood Artists and Icons Series, a conversation with Barbara Bain, the ERA 100 Birthday Bash, celebrating the centennial of the Equal Rights Amendment, the 26th Annual West Hollywood Women in Leadership Awards and Reception, co-sponsored by the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, the Women's History Month Block Party hosted by the WAB, and Ladies of Courage, a two-day cultural arts celebration and festival celebrating the achievements of women. We will wrap up the month of festivities. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of West Hollywood hereby proclaims the month of March 2023 as National Women's History Month in the City of West Hollywood, and urges members of the community to participate in these celebration activities. For more information on any of the upcoming events for Women's History Month, please At this time, I would like to invite representatives from the Women's Advisory Board to help reveal the new banners for this month and accept the proclamation for National Women's History Month. And my colleagues, please join me.
Just make sure someone photo crops us in to the photo.
Please feel free, Nadia, to do a two-minute remarks if you'd like, and one of you from the Women's Advisory Board, please do a two-minute remark as well.
Wow. This is wonderful. First of all, I want to thank the magnificent women of the Women's Advisory Board for this superb banner, and I want to thank each and every one of you for the superb work you do on behalf of women. You're so magnificent, and I'm so proud of you. Thank you. But I must tell you, I'm absolutely tickled pink that I'm sharing a banner with the beautiful, magnificent Ruth Williams. Ruth Williams was so spectacular through the work she did for years and years, her vision and the dedication that she had for the city. And mostly, I want to thank Ruth for her heart and her compassion. If anyone was ever hugged by Ruth Williams, you felt wonderful for this. So it's an honor to be with you, Ruth, and I thank you. I'm absolutely thrilled about this banner here, and I promise you, first of all, Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you for honoring me. I'm delighted. And I want to promise each and every one of you that when I end up on the street of West Hollywood on Santa Monica Boulevard, whenever you walk by, I shall wave at you from my banner and smile at you and give you some attitude. So Ruth, you and I will give them some attitude. Thank you, I'm deeply honored and I treasure this. I love you.
Thank you, we love you too, Nadia.
All right, now I'm going to tell you all a little bit about Nadia Sutton. For over 30 years, Nadia Sutton has been active in the community. She served on the West Hollywood Lesbian and Gay Advisory Board, Women's Advisory Board, and is currently serving on the Senior Advisory Board. She is a founding board member of the Lavender Effect and has served on the Board of Stonewall Democratic Club. In 1989, Sutton founded PAWS L.A., Pets Are Wonderful Support, an organization that helps people living with AIDS HIV keep and take care of their companion animals. Since its founding, PAWS L.A. has extended its services to low-income seniors and people disabled by life-threatening illnesses. PAWS L.A. improves the quality of life for thousands of its clients and their animal companions, and she continues to serve on the board. Nadia is the recipient of numerous community awards, including the West Hollywood Women in Leadership Awards, the Hollywood Now Her Story Award, Women of the Year from Congressman Adam Schiff, and Morris Knight Lifetime Achievement Award from Christopher Street West, and Ambassador of the Year from the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. We're also here to honor Ruth Williams. Ruth Williams was one of the rare West Hollywood residents whose impact was so great that the city lowered its flags to half-mast in her honor after she passed away of complications from a stroke on June 17th. Born March 15th, 1938, Williams, 84 years, made an indelible impact on the city she called home. Williams was a longtime resident, community advocate, and one of the founders of the City of West Hollywood.
and one of the founders of the City of West Hollywood, which was her home since 1948. For over 40 years, Ruth has sat on a number of city commissions and advisory boards, including the original West Hollywood Steering Committee, East Side Project Area Committee, and the Rent Stabilization Commission from 1985 to 1993, and the Public Safety Commission from 1994 to 2021. A single mother raising three children, Ruth paved the way for rent control, pro-tenant housing protections, women's rights, and quality of life issues. She was the founder of Save Our Sheriff, the Alliance of Citizens for the East Side, Citizens for Seniors, was the Chair of the Fairfax High School Alumni Association, Vice Chair of the Fairfax Business Association, one of the first members of Hollywood Now, a member of the National Organization for Women, and the captain of the Lexington Area Neighborhood Watch. While serving as the Director of Advocacy at the National Council of Jewish Women, Ruth was instrumental in curating advocacy and educational programming, partnering with the city on critical issues affecting women and families. We're proud to honor Ruth and her legacy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am so truly proud of the City of West Hollywood. It's such an honor to serve as the mayor during Women's History Month this year. West Hollywood has, from its inception, been a pro-choice city and at a time when women's rights are under attack like we have not seen around the globe, including in our own country. I am so proud of the Women's Advisory Board and women leaders and our entire city because we have always been and will always be a feminist city and a safe space and place for women. Mayor Protam, you have your hand raised. Did you want to make some comments?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. We actually have a surprise presentation tonight. And we are joined tonight by the offices of Senator Ben Allen and Assembly Member Rick Chavez-Zabour to present you, Mayor Seppi Shine, with a state resolution. So at this time, can I please welcome up Robert Oliver, District Director for Assemblymember Zabour, and Ben Davis-Hahn, who is representing Senator, who is also the District Director, representing the Senator Ben Allen, to do a much better job than I will do.
Well, good evening, Mayor Shine, Councilmembers. Mayor Protam Erickson, thank you for that introduction. A couple weeks ago, we stood up here and promised you a resolution, joint resolution, from West Hollywood's elected representatives in Sacramento celebrating the groundbreaking nature of your swearing-in as mayor. And it has finally arrived after only a short delay. Robert, do you want to read off the highlights from it?
Yes, and I also want to extend on behalf of Assemblymember Zabour, congratulations, and on this sixth day of Women's History Month, acknowledge you as a history maker and someone who gives a voice to a community that needs it right now. So I'll read the first of the last two. Whereas widely recognized as the first Iranian-American woman to hold a mayoral post in the United States, Seppi Shine will continue to provide the City of West Hollywood, City of West Hollywood's residents with dedicated and straightforward leadership during her tenure as mayor so that all of its residents are able to experience a great quality of life. Now therefore be it. Do you want to read the last one?
Sure.
Resolved by Senator Ben Allen and Assemblymember Rick Chavez-Zabour that they take the great pleasure in congratulating the Honorable Seppi Shine on her appointment as mayor for the City of West Hollywood, commend her for outstanding record of past professional and civic achievements, and convey sincere best wishes for her success in her new undertaking.
Thank you so much. I'm really so grateful and appreciative. Thank you. Should we get a picture?
Yes.
Thank you, John, for that surprise. I was very surprised, and I look forward to many, many other Iranian-Americans and Iranian-American women leading in elected office for the future, and all women, as we need a lot more women's equity in public office more than ever. Now we're moving on to public comment for this evening. The City Council values your comments. However pursuant to the Brown Act, council cannot take actions on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes, with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items, other agenda items if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. Madam City Clerk, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is Kathy Blavis, followed by Dan Morin.
Hi, good evening, Kathy Blavis, City of West Hollywood. Congratulations, Mayor Shine. I wanted to thank council for putting agenda item, I think, actually consent item with regard to the Queens pillar, the Queens Road pillar. I want to thank you all for putting that forward. And I just wanted to acknowledge Community Member Hollis Brown, who was the one that brought that pillar to the attention of the community, to the attention of the West Hollywood Historic Preservation Alliance and to the Historic Preservation Commission. And it just goes to show that I hope other community members will realize that your voice can be heard if you persevere the way Ms. Brown did and bring it to the attention of other community members. Good things can happen. So again, thank you for putting that forward. And I'll be back this evening for some other comments on agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Morin.
Well, Dan Morin. This November, 45-year resident of West Hollywood. Before, it was a city. It's good to be back. It's been too long. I'm tired of COVID. I'm exhausted mentally and physically from all of this. I can only imagine what other people my age are also trying to deal with this as well. But I'm glad that we're all together. We're here. I'm speaking about item 2I, but before I go on to that, and I'll stay with... Wait a minute, where's the timer? I can't see where the timer is. How much time do I have left?
One minute and twenty.
Or we don't have that anymore? I can speak for hours? Is that it?
You can speak for two minutes, but the clerk will let you know when your time is up, Dan.
Wow, wow, okay. I just want to see, having watched the council meetings at home, it's very difficult, for me at least, I don't know if anybody else in this gathering would agree, it's very difficult when someone on a Zoom call is trying to discern exactly what they're saying because it doesn't seem to be a direct line to the audio from what they're trying to convey to us. That's just, again, my personal observation. I'm using 2I, the Agreements for Services with Harrison Associates, et cetera, as a jumping off point as a more wide-ranging question. I would like to know, since the inception of the city in 1984, how much money in total has the city given or allocated to consultants? I'd like to know it in the aggregate. I'd like to know it by year. I would like to know it by month. And what was the purpose of these monies that were given to these consultants? Because on some occasions over these many years that I've been participating in city government as a citizen, some of the consultant fees, I think, could have been absorbed by our well-paid city employees. So that's just... And I've looked on the website, on the City of West Hollywood website.
Your time is up, Dan. Thank you.
Okay, and I haven't seen it. So that's what I'm asking.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Stephanie Harker, followed by Victor Olmachenko.
City Clerk, can you give a 15-second warning since we don't have the timer up for folks so they can know when their time is going to end?
We'll do, Mayor.
You guys Google. Anyway, Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. Good evening, all. A couple of things. I too wanted to thank the council for putting the Queens pillar on to the historic, on consent to be designated as historic. And Kathy said what I was going to say. But I really, it was kind of a magnificent thing that Hollis Brown, who lives near this and got her group together. And it proves, again, that individuals can make a difference. And the preservation community is very happy about this. We thank her and everyone who worked hard on getting that designation done. I also wanted to mention that Daniel Ellsberg, who is known primarily for the Pentagon Papers, is now 91 years old. He is seriously ill, and I hope that we'll all send good thoughts to Dan and Patricia, his wife. He's probably one of the greatest anti-war activists of all time. He put his life on the line by taking information from the government where he was working and spreading it out so that the people could know the truth about what was going on in Vietnam. I would say he effectively and eventually was the reason that we got ourselves out of Vietnam, which was one of the worst wars we've ever had. So please send him your good thoughts and read his books. Learn how to become an activist. Learn how to fight for what's right. Every progressive cause, Dan was still there. In his 80s, he was still out flinging himself...
Fifteen second warning.
Still out flinging himself onto nuclear power plants that had been leaking to try and get them to shut them down. So, Dan, if you're hearing this, or if you do hear this, get well, we hope, and thank you for your 60, 70 years of service.
Victor Olmachenko. I'll get it right next time, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Good evening. Victor Olmachenko, speaking on behalf of the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance. And I just want to say, what a pleasure to see that you have bestowed local cultural resource status for the almost-century-old Queens Road pillar that truly evokes the history of development along and above West Hollywood Sunset Strip. Then you've heard of Ms. Hollis Brown. The nomination application that she submitted provided very persuasive evidence for designation, which was unanimously recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission at its January 30th hearing. And then city staff followed up with its recommendation, and now you have approved it. So thank you. So as the Queens Road pillar reaches its centenary next year, in 2024, the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance urges that this historic artifact, which graces city land, be restored and maintained by the city as a testament to the evolution of the Sunset Strip. Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to an exciting year of historic preservation. And Ms. Morales, does Ms. Brown follow me now?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to introduce the applicant who brought forth this pillar for nomination, and Hollis Brown.
First, thanks for all the kudos tonight. I have to say, I'm genuinely embarrassed. It feels really good, though. Throughout the years, my husband supported my obsession with trying to protect and restore the Queens Road pillar. It was a lot of years. He supported my obsession, but he did think I was crazy. And I just wanted to add that little note. By the way, this is less than a minute, so don't worry. Mayor Shine, council members, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, thank you for designating the Queens Road pillar a local cultural resource. On behalf of all of us on the Board of the Doheny Sunset Plaza Neighborhood Association, thank you so much for your support, for your votes, and your desire to protect this unique icon of our shared history. That's such an important idea. All of us are very happy and appreciative. In fact, there would have been more of us here tonight to thank you, except there's a neighborhood meeting going on right now. So I know you'll understand that. You know, a goal of this application was to return the Queens Road pillar to its previous condition before 2011. And it's relatively a small, simple paint job. So we sincerely hope that you will undertake a restoration and earmark a small amount of funds to restore the original color and to ensure that Queens Road is elegantly painted on the pillar as it once was. This paint job probably won't cost more than $2,000, and you'll likely have partners to help defray the cost. And finally, my deep thanks to the West Hollywood Preservation Alliance, to the West Hollywood History Center, to Victor Olmachenko, and to John Ponder. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Tsukuru Forz. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Followed by William Yates.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tsukuru Forz. I'm a resident of West Hollywood. So thank you, the West Hollywood City Council, for leading the way by speaking out to protect the environment and the health and the future of our children. I'm speaking about the resolution to W today, the resolution to oppose Tepco and Japan's plan to discharge radioactive water from the Fukushima plant. So by doing so, we are joining hundreds and thousands of concerned citizens and scientists worldwide. Japan and Tepco's approach to assume safety despite the fact that they don't have, they don't know how certain radioactive substances behave when taken into the human body is grossly irresponsible. Tritium, one of the radioactive substances that their water processing system cannot filter out, is only safe as long as it stays outside of the human body. Once it's consumed, it bonds with organic materials within the body and stays there for a long time. It may cause cell death and mutation, and that should alarm you. Fukushima radiation has been present on California coast since 2015. And therefore, though Japan is a sovereign nation, this is a matter that concerns us all. California, you know, if you live in Southern California, we have enjoyed, you know, our beautiful beaches and taken our children to play in the water. And imagine in the future that, you know, we have to tell them no more. No, because, you know, you can't eat seafood. You can't play in the water because it's no longer safe. I really, as a person who...
Fifteen second warning.
Who immigrated here 32 years ago from Japan and called this country and West Hollywood home, we must prevent this. So thank you so much for bringing this resolution. And, you know, I ask you to fulfill our duty by passing this resolution and standing up to protect the environment and the future of our children. Thank you so much.
William Yates, followed by Genevieve Morrow. William Yates, followed by Genevieve Morrow.
Hi, I'm William Yates. Oh, good. Hi, I'm William Yates. My name is Billy, also Billy. I just wanted to echo, you know, what Tsukuru had said. I think one of the things about California is that when we talk about climate and protecting the environment, we're a leader in the country, right? And so in LA, we think of as another leader in the state of California. California, the fifth largest economy in the world, and in all of California, we know that West Hollywood can be a leader amongst the leaders. And so I think that's one of the things that we're talking about when we're thinking about climate change and we're thinking about protecting our ocean. They had three independent human rights investigators go to Japan from the United Nations, and they said that they were deeply regretted Japan's decision to release the radioactive waste into the water, that it could have impacts for millions of people across the Pacific. And from one side of the Pacific that Tsukuru came from, all the way to our side of the Pacific, I think it's great if we can be in solidarity with people and organizers and activists who are also fighting this, because we have, all that we know is that we're all on this planet together. And so I'm really excited because I know West Hollywood will do the right thing and support the leadership to make sure that we can do everything we can to protect our oceans for future generations. That's it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is actually Max Sherman. Genevieve is on via Zoom for other items.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Max Sherman. I'm speaking on behalf of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. It was on agenda item 4F and 6B, so one got passed on consent, the other got tabled, but we'll still put our comment in. For the past three years, our members have experienced unprecedented financial losses due to the substantial amounts of uncollected rent during the pandemic from the eviction moratoriums passed both by West Hollywood and the county. Our membership is 80% owners with, you know, four units or less, so mom and pop owners. Tonight, the council considered continuing the implementation of the seismic program and establishing new compliance deadlines for property owners. We asked the council to allow rental housing providers time to recover, to financially recover, and we asked the council to, before forcing these costly requirements on them, which will force many owners to have to sell their properties and thus cause West Hollywood to lose a significant portion of its existing natural occurring affordable housing. Additionally, the city's planning staff is facing a significant backlog of projects for review and approval, and this will surely add to it. Staff should be allowed time to address the existing backlog of projects before adding more to their plate. We urge the city council to delay compliance deadlines for an additional two years for all seismic retrofit requirements to allow property owners to recover and staff to catch up on the existing backlog. Regarding agenda item 6B, while we appreciate the reasonable tenant screening reports are a new tool, the state law AB 2559 was recently passed in this area to provide for voluntary use of such reports by rental housing provider and needs time to show its impact on the industry. Also, we ask the council to understand that our members are rental housing providers that do not have the ability to change insurance carriers' requirements regarding dog breeds. Thus, we ask the city council to provide an exemption for rental housing owners that have insurance policies requiring the exclusion of particular dog breeds. Thank you very much.
The next caller, sorry, the next speaker is Annie Jomisente.
Thanks for giving in to all the people that spoke out against me last meeting by putting me last. Appreciate it. I was the first one here. I'm always the first one here. I'm always the first one to sign up. Why am I last? I don't understand that. I must be last because of the amount of people that spoke out against me last meeting, saying that I shouldn't even be able to have the right to speak here on all the agenda items. They all have the same rights to come down here and speak or sign up for every goddamn thing, but I'm the fucking person who's here first? So I think I should deserve to sign up first and be first in line, but apparently, you're all willing to give in to other people who literally called in to tell me to shut the fuck up and all of you to silence me. Thanks. Every goddamn meeting, I speak out against fascism, and here we are, you're fucking giving in to them. What the fuck else am I supposed to say? I'm shaking. I don't want to be here anymore. You don't listen. You don't do anything. I fear for my life every day. You virtual signal blast meeting with public gender-neutral bathrooms. No one gave a shit. The trans community does not give a shit about West Hollywood approving gender-neutral bathrooms, because they expect more out of this city. They expect protection. Where is that? Women's Month? How many days is dedicated to trans visibility? One goddamn day at the end of the month? We're not visible. This is all virtual signaling, and none of you, none of you do enough to protect the most vulnerable. I'm really tired of coming here. My body is shaking. I'm fucking depressed. I'm beyond hell. I can't do this anymore.
The next speaker is Bill Harrison.
Everyone, council, thank you for letting me speak. I just had really quick comments on 4D regarding the micromobility program. And my comments are, I guess, questions, not to be answered tonight, obviously, but concerning what is going into this study. I see that the pilot program is ending, sorry, the pilot program is being extended beyond the actual date that you're talking about implementing the program, so I'm curious about that and if that's a typo, why that would start a month later. The second is just, I know that we talk about reporting and statistics and how many people have been hit. I'm more concerned as a resident who's on the street every day of the near misses, which I see many of. People don't report crimes. We know that. It happens with work harassment, sexual abuse, you name it. There's a litany of things that go underreported. I think this is one of them. And as someone who grew up in the era of the Terminator, it's frightening to me that the little machines delivering food seem more hospitable and friendly than scooters barreling down the street. That's all I got. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is David Cooley.
Members of the city council, I am here today with just a portion of the drag artists that perform at the abbey and the chapel. Later tonight, you're going to discuss the future of the drag laurie program, something we fully support, and we hope you increase the budget. Unfortunately, despite the important role the drag plays in our culture, it's often not given the recognition and protection it deserves. In many places, drag performers are still subject to harassment, discrimination, and even arrest for performances. Last week, Tennessee became the first state to criminalize drag shows, hence the Tennessee flags. It's more possible for a drag performer to be charged with a felony and have their voting rights stripped for just performing. The bill is also so broad, it means that a trans person walking down the street could be charged with a felony for impersonating a male or a female. Tennessee lawmakers are not done. They have bills targeting venues that features drag performers. They want to reclassify them as strip clubs. It could soon be legal for a drag queen in a gay bar. Or if you're a gay bar and you won drag performance, you use your liquor license. Drag is not a crime. Tennessee isn't alone. Just two months into 2023, conservative lawmakers have introduced over 340 anti-LGBT bills. We are here tonight to show solidarity for our friends in Tennessee, and we ask the city of West Hollywood to issue a resolution affirming that drag is art and not a crime. Drag is an art form built on self-expression and artistic performance. Drag is also a powerful tool for the political protests that uplifts the LGBTQ plus community in the face of discrimination and oppression. We want the city of West Hollywood to make clear that drag is both an art form and a political protest, both protected by the United States Constitution. We can send a powerful message to the entire country that we value and support the rights of individuals to express themselves freely and openly. We can send a message to our friends all over the country whose rights are being stripped away, and we support them.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Jonathan Zager, followed by Rick Watts.
I'm Jonathan Zager. I live at 8827 Dorington Avenue, and I wanted to come to the council to really ask for your help, because they're about to tear down some mature trees in our neighborhood, starting next door to us at 8823 Dorington Avenue. These are 60-year-old, beautiful, glorious trees. And a sign went up last July saying that the trees were going to come down, and we met with the arborist, who said that they would do a third-party analysis to sort of give, do the proper due diligence before these incredible trees got torn down. And there was a pause in them tearing them down. And then most recently, just a few weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, the sign went up again. And Scott, the arborist from the city, came out along with his boss, and we asked if they'd done the due diligence, the third-party analysis. And we sort of got the runaround from them that they couldn't do it because they'd already repaired the sidewalk, and they couldn't sort of do the analysis. And currently, they've already repaired our sidewalk, they've already repaired our street, and they said that these ficus are doing damage, but they haven't really done the proper due diligence. Then they said that they're going to tear down not only our tree, but they're analyzing some of the other trees in West Hollywood West to come down without sort of the proper analysis. And they said they're trying to do them one by one to avoid triggering some of the California environmental acts, because when you tear down multiple trees, you have to do an environmental analysis to make sure, you know, the potential damage that could be done. And I'm imploring all of you to bring the arborists and sort of that whole department in front of the city council to come up with a plan if these mature trees are going to come down. I don't know to what extent any of you have seen some of these trees coming down on Robertson Boulevard, but it's pretty heartbreaking. Now, there's an argument to be made that these trees shouldn't not have been planted however many years ago, 50 or 60 years ago, but these are the trees that we have, and you can't really change that. And so it's pretty heartbreaking before we tear these down to make sure that we all are in on the plan, that this is the proper decision and/or what is the plan moving forward. And in our meetings with the arborist as well as his boss, I didn't have any confidence that the proper due diligence had been done. And before, you know, you can't, once the tree comes down, you can't change it. So I really implore all of your help to try to
Your time is up.
Do your due diligence. So I appreciate your
Thank you.
Your consideration.
The next speaker is Rick Watts, followed by Zoom.
Good evening, council. I want to give congratulations to Nadia Sutton on her well-earned honors, and also congratulations to Larissa Fuchs and the other organizers of this past weekend's rescheduled Martin Luther King Day of Service. And a thank you to all of the participants that helped with this important project. And then also, I'd like to thank Chris Slawowski, Tanya Kim, and the other organizers of the North Harper Switzer Neighborhood Watch Group, who organized the memorial this, on Sunday, for our late neighbor Jeff McKay. It was well-attended, well-organized, and it would do Jeff proud and did our neighborhood Councilmember Byers has already beat me to the punch on asking that you adjourn in memory of Judy Hyman, or Hyman, Human, I'm sorry, for good reasons, because she helped, without her efforts over the years, perhaps even the Disabilities, the Americans with Disabilities Act itself might not have been passed. That act, among other things, mandates that reasonable accommodations be made by businesses and by government to ensure the full participation by citizens, both in the economic sphere and in participation in their government. To that end, the Disabilities Advisory Board and other boards and commissions, as we go live, there has still not been provision made for hybrid meetings for persons who are at health risk because of, about to undergo chemotherapy, for example, or a serious injury, or a member of the public who has risks of other issues. And we just need to, it's time to act, to get Plummer Parks Room 5 and 6 set up for hybrid meetings for, so that persons
Thank you, Rick. Your time is up.
Can. Thank you.
There's actually one more speaker, Kevin Burton. I don't know if he's, Kevin, are you still here? Okay, we're going to go to Zoom.
Our first speaker on Zoom this evening is Sheng Sim Lim. You will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. Members of the city council, I would like to urge you to pass the resolution opposing the government of Japan and TEPCO's planned discharge of Fukushima radioactive wastewater into the Pacific Ocean. The Pacific Ocean should not be treated as a garbage dump, let alone for radioactive waste. Ocean currents will bring what is dumped off the Japanese coast to California shores. What happens in Japan will affect us here, so please vote to pass the resolution opposing the Japanese authorities' planned disposal of Fukushima radioactive waste into the Pacific Ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker on Zoom is Jamie Francis, to be followed by Adam Darvish. Jamie, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to call and just after the sentiments, I will be talking about some of the housing elements, but I just wanted to say that it's kind of important for you to be aware of the difficulty with people with disabilities accessing areas in and around West Hollywood. I know that you're looking for the passage of scooters and electronic devices, and they're becoming a nuisance and they're becoming an obstacle. And a lot of people and businesses that want to have outdoor dining, that's also obstructing paths on Sunset and Santa Monica, and it's becoming a hassle for a lot of those who are on foot. And I just want you to be aware of that. Living in the city for 12-plus years, it has been a hassle to rely on public transportation and to be on foot with not any courtesy, and it's just getting worse because people are getting, are going into their old habits, and it's just frustrating. And so I just have to emphasize, if you could be aware that Americans with Disabilities and us having our rights violated by people who are traversing in and out of these cities, it's not correct. And furthermore, for people to use vulgarity and think that they have preference and priority, that is wrong for residents to think that they can speak and be the first in line and then use vulgarity and insult us while we're patiently waiting. I really think you have to address the quorum as well as what kind of language can be permitted and used, because we don't need to be lambasted by somebody who's on a show for a free-for-all to just complain and yell out their grievances and swear at the council and for those to hear. Do you know it echoes in your chambers when you have public speakers in person? I can't even make out, but I can hear
10 seconds.
But just be aware of that. So I do appreciate you considering and taking into account us disabled residents. We cannot compete with motorized scooters, motorized bikes, with people who are unaware and don't even care. They just care about themselves.
Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up, Jamie. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Our next speaker on Zoom is Adam Darvish, to be followed by Keith Kaplan. Adam, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Shine and Mayor Erickson and council and staff. The wait tonight in the beginning made me kinder, so I got a, I so blocked that long agenda for this public comment section, but I wanted to thank Mayor Vice President and Capitolmember Byers for the focus on tonight on the agenda for disability access study. And also want to highlight and recognize March as the Disability Recognition Month for disabled residents, but I've talked about this before on the agenda, we could have as a standing agenda for quality of life and safety for all residents in the city. I feel that I feel that we do have that highlighted once or twice or three times a year, but you know, the topic that most residents are not happy about, and they feel, they feel that they call in and make comments, but nothing is followed through. I know it's not easy to do everything on our wish list, but hoping that we'll see more of that on the agenda. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam. Our next speaker on Zoom is Keith Kaplan, to be followed by Yola Dore. Keith, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Keith Kaplan here. Good evening, city council, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Langer. First of all, I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to Chelsea and John, and send heartfelt congratulations and hugs to Nadia Sutton on her well-deserved recognition. With apologies to Genevieve Morrell, who's fearful of retaliation against the chamber of the business community, ask that I not tell anyone about this incident, or a similar one, a year earlier. On December 26, 2022, after you all received my letter about Steffi Shine's disrespectful comments to Myra Friedman, a letter that was then published in WeHo dot, Genevieve Morrell's phone rang at home. When she picked up the receiver, Steffi Shine was shouting on the other end, asking if she had seen the letter I had written, and suggesting that I must be removed from the Chamber Board of Directors. Jen tried to calmly explain that as a property owner and taxpayer in West Hollywood, I was indeed entitled to my own opinion, and was further entitled to voice that opinion in whatever way I felt appropriate. And that opinion was not necessarily representative of the chamber. Ms. Shine persisted to push on for my removal, and with no softening on Jen's part, she asked if Jen understood the kind of power she had, implying that she, Ms. Shine, had the power to do what? This is not the first time Ms. Shine had a conversation like this about me with one of the leaders in our city. Given Ms. Shine's strike record, Jen has every reason to be concerned about active retaliation from Ms. Shine. But I believe that there is no better course than to make you, the council, the city manager, the city attorney, and the voters of West Hollywood fully aware of Ms. Shine's pattern of retaliatory behavior. Putting you all on notice is absolutely what needs to be done to prevent any more of re-inpotency. And I have confidence that your integrity, your understanding of the law, and your respect for our city and the constituency you represent will lead you to do the right thing.
10 seconds.
First Amendment prohibits government officials from retaliating in person for exercising First Amendment freedom. Legislative, public employees, and other public servants can face severe consequences for violating of public trust. If Shine is violated by First Amendment rights,
Thank you, Keith.
She is totally set in retaliation, she has broken the law.
Thank you, Keith.
It's time for Ms. Shine to be removed from office.
Thank you, Keith. Your time is up. Thank you. And our final speaker on Zoom is Yola Dore. Yola, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Yola, please press star six to unmute yourself. Yola, if you can hear us, please press star six. Mayor Yola was our last speaker. I don't believe she's able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the city attorney
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Yola.
Yes, Yola Dore, 30-plus-year resident of West Hollywood. Good evening, mayor, good evening, council, and honored guests. I'd like to speak to you about accessibility. Accessibility is the practice of making information, activities, and other environments sensible, meaningful, and usable for as many people as possible. That means the accessibility to government, reasonable accommodations to meetings, as Chair of the Board, Rick Watts, spoke of. It means accessibility to the sidewalks, accessibility to the stores, to the parks, and so on. It means inclusion. You have on tonight's agenda two items that you're spending quite a bit of money on for consultants. One has to do with the Docless Mobility Program, and the other has to do with the Disabilities Advisory Board. I'm wondering if you wouldn't save some money by having someone that is well-versed in the Americans with Disabilities Act speak to you, educate you, and educate the public in accessibility and what it means. Maybe through that, and maybe a representative that's already a city hall
10 seconds.
place, we together could have many solutions and better communications. I ask you please to reach across the aisle and try. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yola. Mayor, that was our last speaker on Zoom for public comment.
Thank you so much. I would like the city attorney to just address the public about the rights of public commenters with regard to free speech, so that the public is aware of our rights and their rights. Thank you.
Sure, I would be happy to. I know disruption in public comment at public meetings has been a big topic of discussion in the city and nationwide over the past few years, and it's an important topic to talk about. I think it's important to remember that these are business meetings, and we're here to conduct the public's business and get the meetings done in an efficient manner. However, the meetings are also an opportunity for the public to speak to the city council and to provide comment on items that are on the agenda tonight, and items that are within the subject-manner jurisdiction of the city council. So that's a very broad topic. And sometimes people can use language that can be offensive to others, and it can be a challenging situation, because what we can regulate is when people disrupt public meetings. We can't control the content of the speech people use. And it can be frustrating and difficult, but it's just one of those balances with the First Amendment. We have to balance people's First Amendment rights with their ability to come to the council meetings to even criticize their government. People are allowed to do that. And so we try and do the best we can to manage the meetings with decorum and try and get to the items of business. But people are allowed their opportunity to have their two minutes to say what they need to say. And as long as they are not disrupting the meeting and we can get to our business, we give people their time to speak. So if there's any other questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. I think that was great. Oh, councilmember Heilman, yes?
Just one other question. There seemed to be some confusion, but my understanding is that people who are speaking on consent calendar items have priority over everyone else, regardless of what time a person arrived to turn in their slip.
That's correct. It says on the agenda that if you're speaking on a consent calendar item, your name will be called first, then items of just general interest. And if we can't get to everybody before the items of business, there's a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. So the general items of business, or general items of comment can be addressed at that time as well.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I don't know how to raise my hand. So I mean, I can do it on the screen, but you may. And this is maybe a question for the city clerk. Are people allowed to give two public comments, one in the beginning and one in the end? I only ask because I got asked this question, but I remember when I wasn't on the council, I tried to do both, and I was told no one. So maybe the city attorney could address that issue as well? Or the city clerk?
I'd be happy. I'm having some microphone problems. The way it works is we have 20 minutes of public comment listed on the agenda. Consent calendar speakers go first. And sometimes we can't get to all the items of general public comment, and so those people aren't given time to speak at the beginning, they speak at the end. Occasionally, something might come up during a meeting where someone didn't speak at the beginning of the meeting, but realizes during the meeting they want to speak at the end. So it's a little bit of an art, not a science, and depends on how the meeting is run. But typically, it's speaking once, either at the beginning or the end of the meeting. And if there's time at the end, and it's not midnight, the city clerk or the mayor might grant permission for someone to speak twice if they have something different that they wanted to say. I don't know if the assistant city clerk has anything else she wants to add on that?
You covered it. Sometimes it's also at the discretion of the chair of the mayor, depending on how long the meetings run and the business that we have to handle.
Thank you so much. This time is now set aside for the city manager to update the council on important items initiated by staff or previously requested by the city council. City Manager Wilson, please provide us your report.
Sure. Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. Just one item related to public comment. I believe Jonathan Zager has left, but he commented regarding the tree removals. That was related to ficus trees, which do cause extensive damage to public and private property often. But Helen Collins, our Facilitator and Field Services Manager, will reach out to him directly regarding those tree removals. So just a few comments, or updates. The San Vicente Streetscape Improvements Community Conversation will be held tomorrow, March 7, at 5:00 p.m. via Zoom. This is an opportunity for community members to provide feedback on updated conceptual designs for streetscape improvements for San Vicente Boulevard between Santa Monica and Melrose. The virtual link and information is available at weho.org. There are two active shooter preparedness workshops this week, one for the business community on Thursday, March 9, and the other for the community at large on Saturday, March 11, at 10:00 a.m. The March 9 event is at 12:00 p.m. At 10:00 a.m. in the West Hollywood Council Chambers and Public Meeting Room. That Thursday session will only be open to the business community, but Saturday session will be open to all community members. The workshop is free, and participants can RSVP in advance at safety@weho.org. After the event on Saturday, the Sheriff's Department will be hosting a Dialogue with the Deputies event at Dialogue Cafe from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. as well, and that is hosted by the Sheriff's Department. The West Hollywood Sheriff's Station held catalytic converter etching event this past Saturday. 72 members of the public attended to get their converters etched, and additional dates this year are being looked at and will be communicated to the community when scheduled. For questions and more information, please contact the city's Community Safety Department by email at safety@weho.org. And then lastly, the Public Safety Commission will be hosting a special study session and community listening meeting regarding the city's municipal police force feasibility study on this Monday at 6:00 p.m. in the city council chambers. All community members are invited to attend and provide input, and the agenda has been posted online on the city's website. For any questions or to obtain more information, please contact the city's Director of Community Safety, Danny Rivas, at drevis@weho.org. Thank you, mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, city manager. City Attorney Langer, do you have updated language on 2S to read into the record?
Yes, I think it was an oversight to not include when the term limits will start. And so on item 2S, Section 2, there's a brand-new Section 2 dot 30 dot 040 term limit, and we can add a new sentence at the end that says, "These term limits are effective for any term starting on or after March 1, 2023."
With that addition, I'm happy to leave it on consent, or return it to consent.
Thank you, councilmember. Madam City Clerk, what is the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar?
The fiscal impact with the inclusion of items 4C, 4E, 4F, 5D, and 6A is $2,485,613 in expenditures, $297,302 in revenues, and $299,863 in waived fees.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Mayor Protem Erickson, seconded by councilmember Heilman. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Aye. Did you also acknowledge the exclusion of the consent item 2Q when you?
Yes, that doesn't exclude item 2Q. The listed items are for revenues and expenditures, but
I just wanted to usually, we talk about which ones are pulled too.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shine?
Yes. Wonderful. Moving on to our public hearing for this evening.
Sorry, mayor, I am going to read 2S
Okay.
into the record now that it's been moved to consent.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and read that into the record.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of West Hollywood, California, amending city commission names and purview amending commission member attendance and eligibility requirements and updating commission references throughout the municipal code, with the addition of the language provided by city attorney Langer on term limits.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to public hearing, item 3A, an ordinance of the city of West Hollywood, adding Chapter 11.48 and amending Section 1.08.010 relating to street performers to the West Hollywood Municipal Code and amending the code enforcement administrative citation fee. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from councilmembers? Councilmember Meister?
No.
Councilmember Heilman?
No.
Councilmember Byers?
No.
Council, Mayor Protem Erickson?
No.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report?
Thank you, and good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. I am Danny Rivas, Director of Community Safety for the city of West Hollywood. Also joining and who will be presenting this item is Vito Adamidis. I'd like to take just a brief opportunity to actually introduce the city council and also the members of the public to our new Neighborhood and Business Safety Division Manager, who now oversees code enforcement, our business licensing and permitting functions, as well as our animal care and control services. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vito to present.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you the proposed ordinance adding Chapter 11.48, regulating street performers, and also the attached resolution amending the master fee schedule to include the administrative fines for violations of street performer regulations. As we know, West Hollywood is a well-known entertainment destination and home to famous music venues and nightclubs. Busy sidewalks are active with pedestrians, and in certain areas, street performers who seek to attract crowds to their performances. These crowds can sometimes create conflicts to pedestrians using sidewalks, and can impact adjacent vehicle traffic, as well as create disruptions to adjacent neighborhoods and businesses. In response to prior complaints to the city and observations from code enforcement staff, the city has developed a proposed ordinance for your consideration. Other cities like Santa Monica, Santa Cruz, and Laguna Beach also have street performer regulations in place. Although no permit would be required, the proposed regulations seek a balance between First Amendment rights of street performers with the safety of performers, their audience, local businesses, and the general public, as well as preventing unreasonable interference with residents' enjoyment of peace and quiet in their homes, or the ability of businesses to operate and conduct their business. In general, the proposed regulations focus on time, place, and manner restrictions for street performers. Some of the highlights included in the regulations, and more detail are included in your packet, include the following. Street performers cannot demand payment, tips, or gratuity as a precondition to observe or remain throughout a performance. Street performers cannot use live animals as part of a performance. They cannot be within 10 feet of an outer edge to a business entrance. They cannot be within 10 feet of any bus stop or business, and not within 15 feet of a street corner or sidewalk or crosswalk. They may not use any proper power source that may pose a safety risk to the public, and no connection of power cords to adjacent buildings or have them run across the sidewalk areas. They cannot be on or within any public street, highway, median, or alley. And they cannot be within 200 feet of another performer. Furthermore, there are restrictions on times. Performers cannot perform before 10:00 AM or after 10:00 PM, and they must adhere to the West Hollywood Noise Ordinance regulations. No street performers within the Rainbow District or along Santa Monica Boulevard within or near the boundaries of street closures for major events like Pride or Halloween festivities, where thousands of people attend each year. Finally, although violations of the ordinance carry penalties from $250 for the first offense all the way up to $1,000 for third offenses, code enforcement would seek voluntary compliance by way of warnings or informational materials with street vendors that are found, street performers that are found out in the field. This concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Do my colleagues have any questions for staff?
Mayor, I have one question. Thank you very much for the report. I didn't see anything in the report and the proposed ordinance that actually restricts people from using sound amplification. I saw restrictions that prevent them from plugging things in, but I didn't see a restriction on the use of amplified amplification devices if they had a battery-powered one or something like that. And maybe that's just, maybe there's a legal restriction why we can't do that, and maybe that's an oversight that needs to be brought back to us at a later date.
Actually, Councilmember Heilman, thank you for the question. It is, there are some legal challenges in terms of that. You know, what we essentially are able to address and what we've seen in similar cities that Vito had mentioned is complying with the West Hollywood Noise Ordinance. And in terms of also being able to adhere to our minimum with requirements for pedestrian access, right, ADA accessibility and so forth, but we wouldn't be able to restrict and call that out specifically in the ordinance based off of our city attorney's review.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Meister, do you have any questions for staff? Councilmember Byers, any questions for staff? Mayor Protam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry. I think, is that Danny? I think I hear Danny. It is. Okay, that, you don't need to answer. Sorry. Danny, how big of a problem is this? Like, are we going out every week and like citing hundreds of people because they're setting up a jukebox and like performing outside of High Tops?
We are not. We are not going out citing multiple individuals. However, we have received complaints and reports, both from businesses and some residents, even outside of our entertainment district like the Rainbow District. We also had a situation recently actually up on Sunset. And so really what this is doing is really allowing our code enforcement staff that have come across some difficulties and some challenges, calling out an ordinance specific to these, be able to communicate that to these individuals.
How many other cities on the West Side, like with the West Side cog, have a similar ordinance to this? Does the City of LA have an ordinance like this as well?
You know what? I don't know if we looked at the City of LA. I do know that the City of Santa Monica obviously does. You know, I would have to look at the City of Culver City and the City of Beverly Hills as well to check, just to confirm if they do have similar ordinances in place.
But the City of Santa Monica, like at the promenade, you can have a whole show. I've participated in the, in the past, right? They allow it.
They do allow it under certain regulations. And obviously, when you look at kind of like the Third Street Promenade and the pier on Santa Monica, there's obviously a wider area of sidewalk and whatnot. Obviously, the Third Street Promenade does not have vehicular traffic in it, but yes, there are certain restrictions, and they even actually require a permit to street perform on the Third Street Promenade as well as the pier. Outside of those areas, they do not, but they are capable and they do regulate that.
So tell me where, if this ordinance passes tonight, people could perform? I mean, so not within a crosswalk, bus shelter, business, restaurant? I mean, it's a lot of West Hollywood. So theoretically, like where in West Hollywood could someone, you know, sing a little, sing a little tune?
I mean, I would have to look at a specific map, but I mean, the intersection, there's a 10-foot distance requirement, right, from an intersection, from a bus stop, 10 feet from the frontage of a business. So ultimately, there could be some potential areas. I mean, me thinking of some right now specifically, I know along Santa Monica Boulevard, we do have some pretty wide sidewalks, obviously. And so, you know, we would have to take a look to see exactly if we did get a call or a complaint, or if a code enforcement staff member did observe a crowd being generated. And that's really what's stemming or the nexus or the crux of the issue is that, you know, we've gotten those calls or we've seen folks that are performing near the intersections, which cause a lot of crowd and gathering. And then especially in our Rainbow District, you know, during the later hours in the evening, we have obviously a number of patrons and folks that are visiting, and there's pedestrian congestion when clubs are letting out as well. And so when we start seeing those crowds emerging and growing and folks are spilling out and having to walk around those crowds into the streets, that's creating those safety concerns that staff is having to deal with from time to time.
How is this ordinance with street gatherers different than a street vendor, for example? Like, I imagine at a hot dog stand, and I don't think that guy that owns the hot dog stand at Robertson in Santa Monica is there tonight. I cannot see if you are, so this is not a good stew. But like, what's the difference? I mean, crowds gather at street, street vendor, street seller people. What's the difference between this ordinance and that ordinance, especially in relation to the crowds?
Yeah, and actually, the hot dog vendor is here in the city council chamber. I know you can't see him, but we can see him, and he was waving at you. And so, yes, there are distance requirements as well that are similar, but that is different in terms of how we regulate. Street performers are protected under the First Amendment to a certain extent, right? And obviously, we're capable, like other cities that have implemented similar regulations as it relates to time, place, and manner, whereas sidewalk vendors, that is providing, essentially selling food and edibles, and it's also protected under state law. So you have SB 986 that was passed, and I may be getting the numbers incorrect, but I know it's in the 900s, that passed a couple of years back that obviously forced cities to have to adopt regulations and allow street vending. But anytime that we do have street vendors that do propose to operate in the city as a part of that licensing process, we are vetting the location. We are looking at the distance requirements that are mentioned, you know, in our, you know, ADA accessibilities and et cetera, and making sure that there is a proper location if they are in fact stationary. If they're mobile vendors and they're like a pushcart sidewalk vending, then that is something obviously that they're capable of doing, and so they're able to operate with less restrictions as it relates to ADA accessibility, et cetera.
Great. And my last question and hello to my hot dog friend. I would gather around your location. One day I will, when I don't have COVID. Are we able to make this ordinance only for specific, like major related events, like this ordinance is applicable to only when we have Pride and/or Halloween or anything like that?
You certainly could. I mean, that is the will of the city council. If that's something that you want us to pursue, however, you know, we just based it off of what we've seen in other cities and jurisdictions and based off of the observations, obviously, that code enforcement staff have been observing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I have a question. Can you let me know the number of safety incidents that have occurred because of street performers in our city?
I mean, per performer or just in general, like the number of incidents offhand?
Yeah, that would fall under all of these regulations.
Yeah, I can't, you know, we don't have that number specific, but I can tell you probably within the last three months, we have incidents that have been, at least that I've been made aware of, at least, I'd say, four, four different weekends, both Friday and Saturday, and it's mainly in the later evening, early morning hours in the Rainbow District. But then we also had an incident that occurred probably within the last three weeks in Sunset.
Can you describe what those incidents were?
Sure, absolutely. So we got on the Sunset, which was the most recent that I'm aware of, we actually got a call from residents that were reporting the level of amplification in music that was being generated from instruments by the street performers. So as a result of that, our code enforcement officers obviously responded to that and were able to get the folks to understand the noise ordinance requirements and gain compliance in that regard. The other incidents were within the Rainbow District and were near the intersections of Santa Monica and San Viceni. And so we had a couple of situations where we had some businesses that actually reported about the congestion of pedestrians. And in addition to that, code enforcement officers actually observed it proactively, where they seen crowds beginning to gather and spilling out into the streets. And so that is what led to the concern regarding the safety of the pedestrians, the folks that are actually watching the performance, et cetera. So those issues were addressed as well.
When crowds gather like that and spill into the streets, I don't know if we have anyone from LASD that can speak to this, but since you're the Community Safety Director, are there any, is there anything that the sheriffs can do in that regard?
They can, yes. They can certainly, if they're seeing that, more than likely, you know, they would make contact and ask the individuals to either relocate or disperse, you know? So they can certainly do that. However, you know, if they're being challenged specifically in terms of there being any sort of municipal code section, right now, there's not something that specifically addresses this type of activity, and that's the reason why we're bringing it before you and the rest of the city council this evening.
Is there any penal code section that they could use if people are spilling into the streets and a crowd gathers?
I mean, I definitely don't know that specific penal code section off the hand, and that would be better suited for a deputy to be able to respond to.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you. I have another question. Would it, on Sunset, anything would just be a noise ordinance violation, right? So you could tell them to go away because they're violating--
Mayor Protam, we're just asking questions right now. I don't want to get into discussion or anything. I just wanted to say--
It's a noise violation, right? So that's the question. If they're over a certain time and they're violating the noise ordinance, that's the violation, right, Danny?
It would be. Right now, our noise ordinance does speak specifically like after 10:00 PM towards our commercial establishments, and because this is not considered a commercial activity, we would have to use kind of our general noise standard. But again, having that reflected within our street performance ordinance, again, just provides greater credibility, especially when you're attempting to educate somebody that you're making contact with.
And then, but theoretically, if the sheriffs got called to deal with someone setting up outside of Bank of America, they wouldn't be doing other things like actual public safety, correct?
Well, generally, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Station does not respond to these calls. This is something that will either get forwarded over, if they do call the station, to our code enforcement staff or that code enforcement is dealing with specifically. The only time that a sheriff's deputy has ever come out to assist is as a result of maybe the street performer being difficult and being noncooperative with the code enforcement officer.
But that, I mean, the same argument goes to the code team, right? Doesn't this take away someone from code to having to do something that, you know, for all due respect, have something better to do?
Yeah, so code enforcement officers are not being proactive in addressing street performance issues. I mean, obviously, if there are things that have been brought to a code enforcement officer's attention, like pedestrian safety or lack of accessibility, then a code enforcement officer obviously will address those issues to the extent possible. But the reality is, is we're already getting these calls, and we're going to continue to get the calls, and we're going to continue to respond in addition to the other complaints that they receive throughout the evening or during the day.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. Just two questions. Mayor Protam had asked if there were many citations, and there weren't. Is that because there's nothing in our ordinance that allows you to give the citations? I mean, other than obvious noise issues?
Yeah, I mean, generally, it's due to the fact that when we're dealing with the type of issue like this, code enforcement staff, as Vito had mentioned, are going to take the voluntary compliance approach, the educative approach, you know, providing the information materials and really kind of guiding and getting folks to comply that way, right? Without the need of having to ask them for their identification, having to issue them a notice or a citation. So that's really the true reason why, you know, many citations haven't been issued for this type of activity.
So this would basically be giving code compliance the tools to deal with situations like that when they arise and people, and let's say the performers didn't want to cooperate with code compliance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Byers, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand, based on sort of the 10 feet away from this, 15 feet away from that, is there a map or a visual tool that's been created that would tell somebody where they could then be? It sounds like education is sort of the goal and working with people is part of it. It's not, we're not necessarily trying to put all street performers out of our city, but rather find the proper space for where they can be. Do we have a clear sense of where that space is, other than this like 10 foot here, 15 foot there, you know?
Yeah, we have not yet put together a map, but that is certainly something that we can do and will do if adopted this evening and also put that up on our city's website to make sure that folks have a greater understanding of where they can and can't be in terms of street performing. You know, and I also think that we should apply that to our street vendor ordinance as well. You know, as you raised that idea, Councilmember Byers, I think that also would be helpful for our street vendors as well that are thinking about having a stationary type operation.
Yeah, it sounds like that piece of work might be a necessary component to understanding what the entirety of this ordinance adjustment might look like, just to have some clarity in what that spatial allocation could be. Because right now, I can't totally understand if this is about completely limiting street performance in general. I just, without knowing that space, it doesn't feel like I'm clear on what this ordinance is asking us to do or not.
Understood.
All right. So we will now receive comment from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of two minutes, and if you haven't already, please submit your speaker slip to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Annie Jomfisante.
So I have a lot of problems with this. It needs to be quiet for residents so residents can complain about noise at any time, which already makes it illegal in any residential area. Most of the city is comprised of residential area. You can't amplify noise as Heilman doesn't want. It seems that there's no way to compete with the extreme high decibel noise that friction from tires make. So you need a way to compete with automobile traffic. So I think amplified noise should be allowed. If you're having a problem with too many people on your sidewalks, how the fuck is that a problem? Isn't that business? If it's interfering with cars, wouldn't the cars that drive in and out of the city be the problem? Why wouldn't you want people to stay around and hang around street performers? That makes no sense to me. And then, and then to say that they're not allowed to make money on the street is ridiculous in a city in a county based on art. You're literally legislating poor people out for the bourgeois white asshole liberals. the bourgeois, white asshole liberals. Danny, I appreciate you paying attention. Thanks. Yeah, so you're basically just legislating street performance. It's really the last true form of artistic expression. You're not expanding anything. You're eliminating it. And again, and again, my goddamn comment is going to be too short, to narrow the roads and have more people on the street to enjoy the street performers.
Our next caller is Madeline Hamilton, followed by Rick Watts. This is our next speaker.
Hi, I'm Madeline Hamilton. I am the bagpiper on Crescent Heights in Santa Monica. I would like to say that thanks to West Hollywood's encouragement of the arts, I've been able to connect with neighbors. I've been able to raise money for charities like Black Lives Matter and the Wounded Warrior Project. Thanks to my corner, I have been able to develop a one-woman show about the bagpipes I'm taking to the Embro French Festival in August. I've been able to do all of this because of West Hollywood's support for the arts, and I believe that the current proposals 10 feet from the bus stops and the 15 feet from street corners essentially terminates any chances that street performers have of performing, like, no offense, but I don't think the sidewalks are that wide. And I don't really see the logic in these restrictions on busy streets like Santa Monica, where the sirens, traffic, and construction are like much louder than, or in more unpleasant than like 45 minutes of music. I worry about what this ordinance has set a precedent on restricting First Amendment rights of the many due to the complaints of the few. And finally, I would push for more nuance in such an ordinance, if y'all feel like you need to pass one, because I think that they should be addressed on a more case-by-case basis, based on the location. Like, Santa Monica is much louder than like Harbor and Willoughby, you know? That would be a crazy place to do something loud. But versus like Santa Monica and San Vicente, that is very loud, and I just don't think that you can, like, do a blanket-
15-second warning.
-ordinance such as that. And finally, I think that, like, pushing out against all of these street performers violates the qualities that West Hollywood has that make it so great, such as individuality, supporting the arts, and self-expression. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Watts.
Thank you, Council, and I want to thank Danny Rivas, and I appreciate the intent of this proposed ordinance and your comments. But in the 39 years that I've lived in Los Angeles, most of which I have been coming out to West Hollywood in greater or lesser degrees, probably more times than I ought to have, most of which has been down here on Santa Monica Boulevard, I don't think I've ever encountered a problem. And so in that respect, I think that this really kind of strikes me as a solution in search of a problem. I haven't been there all the time, and I'm sure that I've missed, you know, sometimes when there have been problems. But I think that it behooves us all, in the interest of preserving civil liberties, to make this ordinance as, to tailor it as absolutely narrow as possible and as permissive as possible with respect to the performers and the space that it is permitted in. I've actually enjoyed a number of the performers, some of not all of them, in which case I'd just walk on by. I think we have a much greater problem with, still ongoing, by the way, with these blasted scooters that have been running people down, including Lauren Meister's own sister in a crosswalk, and that still has not been addressed. But compared to that, I think this really is a solution in search of a problem that just really does not exist, and I am, I'd like to echo what Annie Jump said and the prior commenter about both respect to civil liberties and allowing amplification within reasonable limits. So let's make this as permissive as possible and as tailored as narrowly as possible. Thank you.
There are no more speakers.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Would one of my colleagues like to start the discussion?
I'm happy to, Mayor.
All right, Mayor Protam?
Sorry, I'm like, kind of watching on YouTube, but it's delayed, so I don't-
You're good.
Okay, great. To the bagpipe lady, love you, thank you, I apologize. I don't live that close to your area, but I've driven by you and I appreciate you. I don't see the necessity for this ordinance. I think it's big government. I just, I don't think we need it personally. I get Danny and I respect the staff for talking about it and bringing it forward. I just don't think, from what I'm hearing, it's a problem at the moment. But before I even get to that line of my thoughts, I actually need some more information. I actually need to see a heat map of where performers would be even allowed. I would like to know the number of calls from businesses and where they're located and what was the end result. And I would like to know kind of those things, because ideally, and sadly, if we're passing an ordinance like this and then, without even seeing a map like that, if there's only a sliver of anywhere that people could perform, I think that's actually setting us up in some territory I don't agree with. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm hoping we can find compromise or table this item to come back and maybe address the street vendor thing that Danny talked about in a more comprehensive way. Otherwise, I won't be supporting this item tonight.
Councilmember Meister?
Well, originally, I was prepared to support the item, but, because I understand that code compliance is looking for tools to be able to address those issues, and with all due respect to the bagpipe lady, I have actually received complaints from some neighbors around the Crescent Heights area, so I just wanted, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm sure you're a great bagpipe lady, but I just, you know, I just wanted to let you know that there have been complaints because of, because of the loudness and it being on a weekend, for example, when people are home and wanting to relax. But I am, I'm, if there isn't support for the item, I would prefer that it be tabled and brought back with, you know, with the map, also maybe a little bit more narrow definition for the ordinance, so. But I'm open to hearing from all my colleagues.
Councilmember Heilman?
Yes, I agree with the idea that we should bring this back, and we should have a clearer understanding of where this kind of street performance would be permitted and where it wouldn't be permitted. But I do understand why staff brought this, and I do think we need to have tools for our code enforcement officers, because right now, they don't really have the tools to say, hey, you're blocking the entrance of this restaurant, and it's creating a crowd control issue, and the restaurant is complaining. So we need to give our code enforcement officers some tools to address this. Whether these are the right tools and whether this is too restrictive, I think we'll know a little bit more if you provide us with a map. I also think we need to have our code enforcement officers be able to address noise complaints. The noise ordinance, I just got an earful from some residents about it not being enforced even against standalone businesses, and they certainly are not in support of street performers who would be adding to the noise that they experience. So I'd like to see more information, and I'm hoping you can bring us back some additional information. And Councilmember Byers' suggestion of a map, I think is a very good idea.
Councilmember Byers?
Thank you. Thankful to my colleagues for supporting this idea of a map. I think something like that would be very helpful to understand what it is we're exactly talking about, and I'm grateful to Danny Rivas for suggesting that a map may be beneficial for the street vendor piece of this equation as well. And just knowing how deep the implications are for the values that we have as a community who celebrates and uplifts the arts and creativity and individuals' freedoms to speech, I want to make sure that we get this right. I am really concerned about the issues when it comes to limiting access in public right-of-way, and very concerned about what it means when people start to sort of spill into the streets. I think the real concern there is the speeds of vehicles traveling down our communities. The idea that people cannot safely move into the streets at all is truly limited because of the traffic issue in our community as well. So just wanted to name that and thank my colleagues. It sounds like we will be tabling this item, and I'm happy to make a motion to do just that.
Okay, I'd like to speak before you do that.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you. So I am absolutely not in favor of this item. I appreciate code compliance bringing this to us and staff. I am concerned about safety issues, and I will just go ahead and say, we are the creative city. I do not want us to lose our West Hollywood flair. Madeline, your bagpipe performances are right down the street from my apartment building, and there are many, many residents that enjoy your performances that I have heard of. There are certain parts of this that I would be supportive of because of safety. For example, using a knife, sword, torch, flame, axe, saw, or other object that can cause serious bodily injury, that makes sense. I don't know, we want, you know, people doing that. That is dangerous. The safety issues that Councilmember Byers expressed, absolutely not ever in favor of preventing people from getting tips or gratuities. We see it all the time. We want people to be able to be compensated for their art. This is an artistic city, and we cannot lose that. We have a lot of queer people that perform for everyone. So let's maintain West Hollywood's beauty, queer culture. This is our city. This is a unique city, and I'm not in favor of changing that. So please, I'm open to the heat map with regard to safety and a very, very narrow version of this, so let's go ahead and table it and have staff bring it back.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. I was trying to unmute at the same time.
I think Councilmember Byers had a motion she wanted to make. No?
So I'm, I agree with you 100%. So I'm actually fine with not approving this and tabling it. If Danny and staff want to come back with something else in some other form with it, it's fine, but I'm actually in complete alignment with what you just said. I agree with the public safety concerns. I understand the tools and the belt argument. I think that's a very fine argument, but I actually concur with you. So I'm actually happy to make a motion to deny staff's recommendation and provide direction within your comments if you want to add that flair, because you're there and you just said it so eloquently, to come back with whatever we want to nuance here at a later date.
Okay, I'll second that motion, which is what I suggested, a very, very narrow version of this that just deals with the public safety aspects. And if the public safety aspect has places, a heat map that is very, very clear for us so that we can make an informed decision.
I'm going to move to table.
I think that's a secondary motion, because there's already a motion on the second on the floor. So we have to take the secondary motion first, right? City Attorney?
Yes, is there, so there's a first motion, and then Councilmember Heilman, you want to do a subsequent motion, a substitute motion?
No, I'm just moving to table the item. I believe that always takes precedence over everything.
Just table.
Yes. But there is a-
With no direction, no specific direction to come back.
I'll second.
So can you explain, City Attorney, what this vote means?
I think he's asking for a motion just to table the item with no specific direction to come back, just to finish the item and table it indefinitely.
Okay, so what happened to the first motion?
His second, his-
So this is like a substitute motion?
It's taking precedence over the motion with-
And if this fails-
To bring it back with more direction. Excuse me?
And if this fails, what happens?
If this motion fails, then we can talk about Councilmember Erickson's-
Thank you. That's why I was trying to say, thank you very much. Okay, let's get a roll call vote for that.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Byers?
And just to be clear, the current motion is for tabling the current item?
That's correct.
Tabling the item with no specific direction to come back.
No.
Councilmember Heilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Meister?
No.
Mayor Protam Erickson?
No.
And Mayor Shine?
No.
Motion fails.
So then, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So I'm going to make a motion to, well, what I said before. So I'm going to make a motion to, and City Attorney, sorry, my thing isn't working, to deny staff's recommendation on recommendations one and two, and then provide direction for you to, staff to come back related to Mayor Shine's specific aspects around public safety. Did I catch that, Mayor Shine?
Yes.
Do we, we don't have to deny the recommendation, aren't we just basically asking staff to bring back-
A different ordinance.
Right, with a different ordinance.
That only addresses, it's more narrowly tailored to just address specific public safety items?
Yes.
Do you want the map or no? Because it's just limited to, very limited public safety items.
I would like to see the map, if that's possible.
I'm happy to include them in the motion, just for the sake of the argument. If that's okay with the secondary.
Yeah, I think I said that, that if the public safety issue has, needs a map designation, then include it.
That would be my motion then, Mayor.
Great, and I seconded. So let's get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Heilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Erickson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shine?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're now going to take a 10-minute break.
And we are allowed, Lauren Langer, City Attorney, to turn our cameras off for 10 minutes?
Yes, well, we're on recess.
I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you. Thank you for your report. We didn't praise you
Please return to your seats. We will now be reconvening our meeting. We will now move to item 4A, update to the Drag Laureate Program. Do we have a brief presentation from staff on this item?
Just a brief verbal overview.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Taylor Coyne. I'm the Business Development Manager. I'm joined by Jackie Rocco, Deputy City Manager and Interim Director of Economic Development. So that's a lot. And Rebecca Eman, Arts Manager. We're here to provide a brief update on the Drag Laureate Program and are seeking approval from City Council for staff-proposed changes to the program. At the October 19th, 2020 City Council meeting, council directed staff to develop a Drag Laureate Program. The intention of the program is to create an honorary position that will serve as an official ambassador of West Hollywood's vibrant drag culture, using the position as a platform to promote drag culture and arts in West Hollywood. In September 2022, the application for the Drag Laureate Program was released, and due to feedback from the community, the application process was halted until changes were made. The major changes to the application include increasing the annual honorarium to 12,500 a year to reflect a fair working wage, along with a $2,500 stipend for an annual event that will be planned and hosted by the Drag Laureate. Increasing the number of events the Drag Laureate is expected to attend to 15. Transferring the management of the Drag Laureate Program from the Business Development Division to the Arts Division within the Economic Development Department. The Drag Laureate will participate in the city's Artist Bootcamp, a series of six interactive professional development workshops designed to assist artists in developing individualized plans for success. The Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, with one representative from the LGBTQ+ Commission and one representative from the Transgender Advisory Board, will review applications and make the selection of the Drag Laureate. The Drag Laureate is expected to serve a two-year term beginning July 16th. Thank you, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Do my colleagues have any questions from staff? I'm going to call Councilmember Meister first.
I have no questions except why haven't we done this already?
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Heilman.
Yes, thank you. I just had one question. You know, drag culture is all about being sort of bold and maybe not as kind of iconoclastic and saying outrageous things at times. When somebody is an official representative of the city, how do we make sure that whoever is chosen as the Drag Laureate is going to adhere to the city's guidelines and that we don't run into any kind of issues? I mean, part of the joy of drag culture is the outrageous things that are said. But we know that when somebody's officially a representative of the city, saying outrageous things can get us into trouble. So has that been, has there been any thought about that?
Yes. So part of the adjusted application process is there are more questions, I think tailored to what you are getting at, of making sure you know that you are a representative of the city, how you feel about the city and what your plan is to convey that message in an official capacity to the broader community. So I think through the application process, we'll be really trying to get at that question of any applicant who applies. Also, whoever is chosen as the Drag Laureate Program will have to go through a communications and media training with our communications director.
Okay. On a sort of different note, we know that, as David Cooley said earlier, the drag community is under attack, and so is the trans community. And there, any sort of marginalized aspect of the LGBTQ+ community, the right wing is attacking. So are there plans to do something other than this, to try to celebrate drag culture or to provide more support for people, not only within the community but outside the community?
As part of this inaugural program, there isn't anything detailed in that way. However, with, I think, the changes to the application of what I spoke about before, about what we are seeking for in an applicant, very much since this is a brand-new program, the hope is that this person helps us make the program better over time and can contribute to what's working, what should be adjusted, what other benefits can we provide to this community that would be worthwhile. So ultimately, hoping that that applicant works with us to improve the program going forward.
You answered my questions. Thank you.
Great.
Councilmember Byers.
Thank you. I'm curious if, this is an incredible program. I know we're certainly not the first city, but we are among a esteemed few cities even considering something like this. In what ways might we amplify this program beyond the city to sort of tell the story of the importance of drag? Has any of that been considered as well?
There we go. So as part of the, you know, coming back and working on the new application, we did speak to the San Francisco team that launched their program. And part of the new application and our guidelines are that you work with the Drag Laureate who's selected in San Francisco also. What is working in that program? What are best practices that we can share going forward and really build off of both of these cities trying to do something new and exciting and making the program best for both cities and by learning from each other?
Terrific. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. My question relates to stuff that was kind of discussed tonight regarding what David Cooley brought up. So the city bans travel to states that have bigoted policies. However, the Drag Laureate is an amazing position. So theoretically, is there wiggle room within our ordinance? Or is that something we need to look at in order for them to maybe be an ambassador? If they go to Tennessee and there's a big protest there or something like that? Have we thought about that? Or what implications would this have for our Drag Laureate?
That wasn't in the scope of this application. And I would say too, you know, I can, maybe Jackie would chime in. But otherwise, you know, the honorarium that they're given is really for the events that they will be putting on, you know, with the city, with various businesses in the community. The money is not, you know, no one can stop someone from traveling elsewhere, but it wouldn't be a city-sponsored trip at this particular juncture. But we could think about that for future programs or come back and, you know, with further clarity. But it wasn't something that was in the scope of this particular application process for this year.
Well, maybe not even to restricted states. I do think some level or scope of travel should be paid for by the city if they're going to national rallies. I don't know. That's for you to figure it out later. My question is around the dollar amount. I know there's been some fun around the dollar amount. Can you let me know how you got to this number? What, where in the formula? Or is there a formula that got you to the $15,000 annually?
So it was about trying to figure out what a fair working wage is for basically an event. And knowing that there are hours of preparation beforehand, it's not just the hours that you are there performing. But between talking with different community members and also hearing from San Francisco and the research that they did, I believe San Francisco's rate was between $250 to $500 per event. This at 12,500, not excluding the 2,500, because that is really for the event that they are supposed to be hosting and planning, but gets you to about $830 an event, which seems, from our research, a fair working wage for those events.
Thank you.
All right. Can we move to public comment on the item? Do we have any speakers, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have Stephanie Harker, followed by Kathy Blavis.
It looks like Stephanie went out. So Kathy?
People mix us up all the time. Actually, I believe Stephanie's was a position slip in favor. So anyway, so I'll just refer to myself as the way other people do. I'm Kathanee Blavis. In any event, I'm very supportive of this. And I do think this is about time that we really put our laureates, both Drag Laureate and our Poet Laureate, who is already well compensated on the map, especially considering what's going on all over the country. And we are a beacon for so many different aspects of lifestyle and progressive behavior. So I'm just in full support of this. And it should be a no-brainer, as Councilmember Meister said. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope you all be in support. Thank you.
And Mayor, we have two speakers on Zoom for this item. Our first speaker is Genevieve Morrell, to be followed by Ms. Tiger. Genevieve, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry I could not be with you in person tonight. Mayor, is it would be okay? I'd appreciate 30 extra seconds to address the comments made by my colleague, Mr. Kaplan, since my name was bandied about, if okay with you.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, I want staff and public to know that while the chamber has had many challenges in the past couple of years, Mayor Shine, as well as Mayor Pro Tem Erickson, have been working to mend our relationship for the betterment of the community. And we hope to work together on important issues facing the business community. And I want that on the public record. Thank you. Now, Drag Laureate. Good evening, Mayor, the council members. I'm Genevieve Morrell, President and CEO for the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I want to first thank Councilmember Meister for your vision for this program and providing an opportunity for the drag performer, which shines a light on this business segment. We appreciate your willingness to hear our concerns and their commitment to fair compensation with an increased stipend. During the initial exploration of the program and our possible involvement, we learned about some of the issues facing the independent, non-represented performers and how they are rarely taken seriously as a business. The legitimization of drag performance as enterprise means they often face tokenization, object sophistication, and many times are not paid appropriately from a booked gig. The chamber took inspiration from this and separately began to develop a program under our newly established Small Business Foundation, whose mission is to develop equitable and inclusive economic opportunities for small business, including but not limited to those designated as minorities, disadvantaged women, veterans, LGBTQ, and BIPOC. The foundation will play a positive role in supporting independent, unrepresented entertainers, and is motivated to take important steps in advancing the segment of business in the marketplace by developing additional programs that support performers recognizing themselves as legitimate businesses. So Councilmember Byers, I love your comment because things that we did. Unlike the poet, these are entertainers who have costs beyond just showing up, which my two minutes will not allow. And we encourage an equitable stipend for this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Our next speaker on Zoom is Ms. Tiger. Ms. Tiger, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shine, Mayor Pro Tem Erickson, and City Council members. My name is Ms. Tiger. I am a drag performer, Executive Director of the Blue Boy Archives and Cultural Arts Foundation, and the current co-chair of the LGBTQ+ Advisory Board. The board elected me as their liaison for the Drag Laureate Program. And for 17 months, I advocated for pay equity as well as other items, many of which have been addressed in the revisions stated in tonight's update. I'm happy to see that management of this program will be transferred to the Arts Division, as it was not a good fit when placed with the Business Development Division. Ultimately, this program should be included within the purview of the new LGBTQ+ Commission. And I suggest that this matter be addressed when staff returns to City Council with an assessment of the program in fall 2024. This program should have a minimum of $25,000 honorarium based on, one, research that was provided to the city in October 2021; two, the costs associated with drag performance; and three, the expected duties within this program. With that said, I'm happy to see a proposed increase from $5,000 when this program initially launched. If council approves the proposed annual honorarium of $15,000, I suggest that it be in addition to the 2,500 event budget, totaling a $17,500 honorarium. It is also my opinion that the proposed increase in the number of events negatively impacts the gains made with the honorarium. As an alternative, I suggest considering 10 events and one annual event for a total of 11 events per calendar year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tiger. Mayor, that was our last speaker on Zoom.
Do we have any more speakers in person?
Yes, we do. We have Annie John Vicente.
Thank you.
Thanks for recognizing that. Thank you. Just want to say, you know, I don't really trust council members to speak. You know, it sounds like, it sounds like they should, you know, have more limitations, Heilman. Doesn't that sound right, based on what he said? Because people can't be trusted. You know, you have to really curtail what they speak, really train them. They're in drag, they're trans, they fucking speak radically and outrageously. And yet, here we are, sitting, hearing Heilman, the person I complain about every goddamn week for his authoritarian reign, saying, "Let's limit speech. Let's limit, let's control a trans person, a drag queen, apologies, a drag queen, and just, you know, let's control their narrative. Let's really make sure that happens." Number two, if drag is about performance and pageantry, why is this an appointed position? I would rather elect this position. I want to elect the person representing the drag community and the trans community. I want that. I don't want your appointees to appoint other people. What is this? Appointmanship should have been banned with the 17th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. That's why the Senate is elected now, not appointed. Why are we still doing any type of appointmanship in this country? Thank you.
Any more comments?
No.
Public comments? Okay. Do my colleagues have any other questions? I think Mayor Pro Tem, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This conversation has actually spurred a conversation about equity. And I want to thank, I think that was the LGBTQ Advisory Board, as well as Ms. Tiger, who I know just commented. My concern is now, let's look at equity across the board for the rest of these positions. And maybe this is a question for David, when we always talk about more money. But obviously, when you pay one person more, the other people go, "Hey, what about us?" And so what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? And so I don't know, David, if you are having that conversation now. Maybe you will when you come to the mayor and I. But could you, could someone answer, whoever I think is appropriate, that question around equity around these other positions?
So I think the only other similar position is the poet laureate. And that's something that we can review, because I think the time is up for a new poet laureate very soon. So we can review the compensation for that position as well.
For the next one.
For the next round.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any comments?
I'm prepared to move the item.
Great.
Unless Councilmember Meister wants to.
I would love to move this item along.
I will second it then.
I would also like to ask if my colleagues would be open to us asking staff to bring back a resolution on the drag, what David Cooley discussed about us bringing forward a resolution in support of drag.
In Tennessee?
I'm sorry?
Related to the Tennessee issue?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Meister, would you also add direction for the next poet laureate to have equitable compensation in that argument as well? I think official direction should be given, since we're doing one, we should do the other.
Sure. We can add that and maybe a review of their responsibilities as well, along with that. That's my motion.
Seconded.
I'll second.
Great. Oh, okay. I think Councilmember Heilman seconded. May we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Byers.
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman.
Aye.
Councilmember Meister.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Erickson.
Enthusiastic, yes.
And Mayor Shine.
Yes. Motion passes. Wonderful. Let's move to item 4B, Proposed Permanent Outdoor Dining Policy and Amendment to Chapter 11.28 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code. I'm going to let staff get situated. Can we get a brief presentation on this, please?
Yes, I'll try to provide a brief overview. So my name is John Keogh. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. And with me are Rick Abramson and Jackie Rocco. So thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. This is a follow-up to the item that went to the City Council on February 6th, 2023, regarding permanent rules for our temporary outzone program. At that meeting, the council provided guidance on general support for the item, specifically support for the conversion of parking spaces into outdoor dining only where there are narrow sidewalks. Also, support for creation of outdoor dining eligibility and site design guidelines to help businesses come into compliance. Council also directed us to return with ordinance that would allow for outdoor dining to be placed on the public sidewalks in front of adjacent businesses upon the, okay with the adjacent businesses. So we have done that. And if you want to turn to Attachment A, it's on page four in that attachment. Also, the council asked us to look into expediting of the permit requests. So we will be reaching out and meeting with all of the people who have temporary outzones right now to see how we can help them move forward more quickly. Also, I want to bring attention to the fact that the council had already reduced the number of parking requirements for outdoor dining, had already had allowed for up to 1,000 square feet of private parking lots to be converted into outdoor dining without replacement of parking. And the council has already approved streamlining the review process for the cell service and consumption of alcohol at restaurants. So now, the only time that we have public hearings for alcohol at restaurants is if it's outside after 11:00 p.m. Otherwise, it can be approved at the staff level. So one other thing we're going to commit to, to help streamline things, is currently, the way outdoor dining is reviewed, is planning reviews, the outdoor dining permit, then followed by engineering with their encroachment permit. We're now going to combine that into one time period. So we're not duplicating or doubling the time period. So that should also be helpful. And then finally, we'll clarify the end time for the temporary outzone program for the time when the K rails would go away and by the time that either restaurants would go back to where they were before the pandemic or they would choose to come into compliance with the new rules. And so we would have that date be January 12th, 2024. That way, businesses can have the rest of this year and then the holiday season, and then they would need to clear everything away. And with that, we're all available for questions.
All right. Do my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I was wondering if there is a cap on the size of the outdoor dining area? I know that council agreed to waive parking spaces for up to 1,000 square feet. But then after that, you know, what are we looking at? And the other question I have is, for example, if a restaurant is allowed to, in a sense, double their occupancy by adding outdoor dining, what happens with like the number of bathrooms, those types of requirements?
Sure. So as far as the number of bathrooms goes, that's still a building permit issue. So the Building and Safety Division would still take a look at that regarding occupancy. And if, looking on it based on occupancy, it requires them to modify their restroom facilities, and they would need to do that. So that's how we would handle that.
And what about parking? Because I know that, like in some areas, we have the parking credits program. In some areas, we don't. Although we have it here, we've learned that, you know, our parking garage is full most of the time. And so if we're taking up some, you know, on-street parking with, you know, with outdoor dining or if we're allowing restaurants to replace parking lots with outdoor dining, then if it's over 1,000 square feet, it seems to me that there could be unintended consequences. Is that, what is your thought on that?
So the way the ordinance is written now and how the council passed it, it was up to 1,000 square feet of parking lot could be replaced with, could be converted to outdoor dining without replacing that parking. So if they wanted to, let's say, replace 2,000 square feet, the first 1,000, they wouldn't have to replace with parking. But the second 1,000 square feet, they would have to purchase parking credits. So they would have to go into the parking credit program. So we're not waiving the parking, or they could find other parking someplace. So the credit is only for up to 1,000 square feet, not beyond?
No, I understand that. But we don't always give parking credits if we don't have someplace for them to go. So we only have parking credits in two districts, as far as I know. So what are we doing with the rest of the city?
That's true. So if they're in a location where there isn't a parking credit district, they could do the old-fashioned parking use permits, or they could request use of the new state law that says that the city can't require parking. So that's another option for a business.
Councilmember Heilman, do you have any questions?
No, I'm prepared to move the item.
Any questions from other colleagues? None from, okay, Councilmember Byers?
Thank you. I just had one question. I know when we asked to bring this back, that one of the adjustments made was regarding the agreement that would need to be made between a neighboring business. I see that written in item E. I just want to get clarity on what that would look like. Is it a contract that we're offering that needs signature? Is it a generic letter, just so businesses eager to make this could stand?
So that will be part of, excuse me, that will be part of the engineering review of the encroachment permit. So we would need to have a document in writing from the property owner, and if they have a tenant that's different than the owner, agreeing to that. And then on the encroachment permit itself, we would identify that the encroachment permit could be revoked if necessary, if the restaurateur, I mean, if the neighboring business wants their facade back.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. John, just for clarity, I've gotten some comments regarding dialogue. Can you confirm that they're going to still be able to keep? I think that, how I read this ordinance, they're going to be able to keep their spot on Holloway. Obviously, they can't use Paul because it's a slope. So can you just triple confirm? Because I know that we were having this conversation last time.
First, I want to make sure everyone is aware that every single application is going to need to be looked at and reviewed. We'll have to look at and review the actual application. But conceptually, we can talk about it conceptually. So conceptually, I think the sidewalk is less than 12 feet. And if it's a less-than-12-feet condition, then they could apply to use the parking spaces on Holloway. We then need to take a look at, you know, turning maneuvers and that type of thing to make sure it's safe. to make sure it's safe, and look at how they're going to propose to convert that into a permanent outdoor dining area. But conceptually, they would be able to do that, and they would also be able to request the use of the private property in front of the neighboring spaces, neighboring businesses.
And since the owner of Dialogue owns the neighboring space, that agreement shouldn't be too difficult, right?
One presumes that would be fine.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarity, because I was getting some questions, and just, I know every application is taken in accordance, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Do we have any comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is Annie Jump Vizende.
Bathroom occupancies, worrying about that. I say, why don't we install public restrooms? We just don't have any at all in the city. We just don't have any in L.A. It is really difficult to walk around and even try to use a restroom anywhere. You literally have to trek all the way back home if you live in this area. And then if you're at a restaurant, outdoors, waiting for indoor occupancy bathrooms, I don't really know how the legality is with outdoor versus indoor occupancy, but that can definitely be mitigated if you just installed outdoor, public restrooms. Hey, you can even hire staff to rotate clean it like once every hour or so. The city's got plenty of money to do that. And make the encroachment for dining spaces be larger. Fuck those cars, take space away from them, and bring it back to people who want to eat on the street and to people who want to perform on the street. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gillian O'Connor. Okay, our next speaker is Stephanie Harker.
Good evening, Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood, but you already knew that. I just wanted to, I don't know if this is the right item to bring this up on, except that I don't know if I spoke about it last time, but there's been a lot of concern, especially on the Disability Advisory Board, when I go to listen to them speak at their meetings. Can we make sure that when we are finally allowing these, and I think they're wonderful, it makes the city vibrant, but the clearance on the sidewalk, again, some places you can get through, some you can't, but if you have a wheelchair, or a baby stroller, or whatever something, a walker, it makes it very difficult to get by people dining and having a wonderful time. There's a place up on Sunset that right now, the outdoor, there's a place that narrows the sidewalk to about maybe a foot and a half, because they've come pushed so far out onto that wide sidewalk on Sunset, that disabled people or groups of people have to go into the street to get around it. And I don't think that's fair, and I think, again, we need to start making the disabled community a priority. If it works for the disabled, then everybody else will be able to get through it, too. Thank you.
We have Zoom speakers as well.
Our first speaker on Zoom this evening is Genevieve Morrell, to be followed by Tara Punzon. Genevieve, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Genevieve Morrell, President and CEO for the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. These outzones and allowance to use private parking slots have been a godsend to the survival of many restaurants, as you know, and we're so grateful to the council and the staff for finding solutions to help us continue to thrive. There are a couple of places that have major challenges with the proposed requirements, and I hope we can continue to be innovative and explore other considerations on a case-by-case basis. As per Mr. Lehman's letter, we agree that if we can go further to support the original intent, which was to waive all parking for outdoor dining and not just 1,000 square feet, it will further help alleviate the enormous increases across the board. Rents, payroll, goods and services, we are all experiencing doing business with the highest inflation ever. Expenses are 30% to 50% more than pre-COVID, and we are far from recovering where we once were and still need any help you can provide above and beyond what you are already generously providing. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Punzon, to be followed by Jamie Francis. Tara, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Tara. I'm the owner and operator and chef of Puravita and Puravita Pizzeria. I'm also a homeowner in the City of West Hollywood. I'm a New Yorker. I believe that the City of West Hollywood is the best city in all of the West Coast. There's a lot of reasons why I'm here, and one of them is just the way that this city is run. I want to say thank you for all that the city did to help restaurants from the beginning of COVID. We would never have survived if they didn't jump into action and allow us to have our outdoor dining space. It's a very, very tight space. As some of you might know, our patio has very recently been torn down, and since then, we've had to let go of about five employees and cut about any full-time employees down to part-time. There's a petition from the community with about 1,200 signatures, everybody set up in arms. But we understand that safety is obviously the priority and that there's some irregular situation happening in front of our restaurants. But the narrative has been changed by COVID, so we really need to figure out how to rebuild a safe patio. So I guess what I'm asking for is potentially to be a priority, as I believe that it will need to be handled on a case-by-case basis. We're obviously going to need some special help to design a safe patio outside and to, you know, make sure that we can continue serving our community in a safe way, but to have the outdoor option available to those who are not ready or will never be ready to dine inside again. So we're not sure what the regulations are yet. We haven't been told, but I guess what I'm asking is for, I hate to say special attention, but we're willing to do anything that we're told, and we just need some guidance on a particular space. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. And our final speaker on Zoom is Jamie Francis. Jamie, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, City Council. City Council, I live south of Sunset Boulevard at the corner, and I just want to speak through experience, because I'm someone who lives with a neighbor who has a mobility issue in a wheelchair, but by myself, I have scoliosis and I have disabilities, and I walk everywhere and take public transportation. What I want to emphasize is places like the Den on Sunset, then you have, I don't know if it's another restaurant a little bit further up, that has outdoor dining and cinder blocks, and it really obstructs the access point, and you do not see people coming even when they're on motorized scooters. I mean, it really forces people like me on foot, I never thought I would say this, but I'm walking in the street more than I am on the sidewalk. The upper word is sidewalk. And here, I'm the one getting right-of-way for valet parking, people waiting on the sidewalk smoking, scooters coming by. I live on Havenhurst, that is a blind area. I think the Katana Restaurant, or I believe somewhere further, right before Las Yenca, they have valet parking, people pulling in and out of their parking lot. And they're totally, they disregard or even take my concerns into consideration. They look at me dumbfounded, and I'm supposed to walk on planks, or I'm supposed to walk in the street because you have somebody who's homeless who's then pushing carts? You have to be aware of people who are on the sidewalk who are dominating, and it's not for people who can use and just traverse. It is becoming an impossible feat. It is becoming discouraging. I get restaurants that need access points and want residents to have outdoor fine dining, but you are doing at the detriment of pedestrians and people who want to commute. I'm looking as if I'm the oddity. We went going by Hamburg or Mary's or other places that, like Joey's, it's always been like that because of the corner off of Santa Monica. So they have that distinction.
Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up.
Thank you, Jamie. Mayor, that was our last speaker on Zoom for this item.
Thank you. All right. Do my colleagues have any comments? I know Councilmember Heilman, you had wanted to move this item.
Yes, and I still do. And I would like to move the recommendations that staff has presented, and that is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood, California, amending chapter 11.28 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code regarding outdoor dining in the public right-of-way. And I'd also ask staff to meet with the owner from Puravita to see what options are available.
And I'd like to second that, but of course, open to hearing from our colleagues. Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. So I'm going to vote no on this item for the same reasons that I brought up when it was brought to us a few weeks ago, that I believe that it is a public safety issue to have outdoor dining in the actual roadway, removing parking spaces when we keep hearing about not having enough parking spaces, and also the competing interests of alternate mobility and the ability for alternate mobility to actually be riding in the road as opposed to the sidewalk. So, and I also, I wish that my colleagues at least would consider putting a cap on the actual additional outdoor space over and above what people already have if they're expanding it, whether it's 1,000 square feet, or 1,500 square feet, or 2,000 square feet, whatever it is, but I think that there should be a cap. Thank you.
I also wanted to just address Stephanie Harker's comments, and just ensure, as part of this item, I remember we were definitely making sure that there is access for people with disabilities in our community. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly. We met with, I think, the DAB, and we definitely included provisions in the regulations to provide for a wide path of travel and other regulations to help ensure accessibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Byers?
I don't have any comment.
Mayor Protem?
I believe to comment on Councilmember Heilman's direction regarding Puravita. I did speak with Tara a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate her calling in. I believe staff has been in communication with her. I don't know if there's anything new that they're going to tell her, but I support the motion, but I do know that, you know, sadly, that area is, you know, dangerous. But anything we can do to help them further, I'm willing to do, but I just don't want to duplicate or triplicate staff's work.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
No.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Yes.
And Mayor Schein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving to item 4D, agreement for services with Tool Design Group for consulting services and development of permitting requirements for the permanent Dockless Micro Mobility Program. Can we get a brief presentation from staff on this item?
Good evening. My name is Kobe Wagman, and I'm here with my colleagues Francisco Contreras and John Kehoe. I should start by saying good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and Council. We're here to give you a brief recommendation on the Dockless Micro Mobility Pilot Program. Please, next slide. So staff recommends the approval of an agreement for services with Tool Design Group for consulting services in the amount of $116,000. Extend the micro mobility pilot through October 31, 2023, and start the permanent program on November 1, 2023. I should make a note, there was a typo in the staff report that said September 1. It is November 1. And third, authorize the city manager or designee to execute documents incident to the agreement. Next slide, please. The scope of services for the consultant would be discovery and research, community outreach, including focus groups and a community survey, best practice recommendations and permitting requirements for contact with selected vendors, comprehensive summary report, including implementation plan, permitting handbook and draft service agreements, and finally, assistance with developing and processing final requests for proposals. Next slide, please. The extension of the pilot program would be through October 31, 2023, with the final version of it starting on November 1, 2023. And the additional time this extension will allow Tool Design to perform the required survey and needed analysis prior to the end of the pilot. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Do my colleagues have questions? Councilmember Meister, we'll start with you.
I was just wondering what happened to the survey, the scientific survey that we all heard was going to happen among West Hollywood residents.
An initial survey was conducted in September, I want to say, last year, and it ran for about two months. It was done through our vendor populace, and the results were brought to council, I want to say, on September 19, 2022. We did budget for another survey with the same firm, populace, but have since decided to look into additional services and help with this consulting group Tool Design, which would be bringing an additional poll or survey in different methods.
Yeah, but that survey was not a scientific, statistically sound survey. It wasn't a survey of West Hollywood residents, a random survey. It was a survey that was put online that users of the three mobility companies, the mobility companies actually sent out to those users to make sure that they got plenty of answers from the users, not necessarily our residents.
It was open to the entire community. You're correct, the companies that were participating did push out the survey to their users, but it was also available to our residents. And then we also did field surveys at the farmer's market and whenever we had the opportunity to interact with the public. But we did hear, I do hear you, and that feedback was taken into consideration and is one of the main reasons we're looking into doing an additional survey.
But what you've described in the staff report is the same, so it's not a scientific, random survey of West Hollywood residents that is described in the staff report.
Yeah, what we can do is that we can turn it into a scientific survey, so, you know, we just have additional parameters to include as part of the scope of services for the consultant. I mean, we can definitely do that.
And I actually agree with that, so I'm glad that staff, you're willing to do that, to have it be statistically valid and a survey that gives us as many criteria and as much information as possible so we can make informed decisions. Councilmember Heilman, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm a little bit confused about what the point of this study is if you've already determined that the program is going to be permanent and when the permanent program is going to begin. So what is the consultant studying and what will that information provide if it's already been decided that this is a permanent program?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe it's been decided that it's permanent just yet. We were moving in the-
Your item refers to it as implementing the permanent program on November 1.
That's the direction we are moving in terms of, and we're preparing for that, but one of the items that we- But one of the items that we did hear feedback on was that we wanted more input and feedback from the community. And that's why we're trying to get an extension to make sure we get this information before we come back and ask for a decision or a recommendation to make the pilot permanent.
So if I can add some more to that, Councilmember Heilman. I think what the consultant is going to be helping us is actually build up the particular requirements for all the vendors and the permanent requirements, what will be the fees that are going to be established, what are going to be the operating procedures with regards to rebalancing the equipment, what are some best practices from other cities that have been doing that? So they're actually going to take a deeper dive into how to best operate a permanent program. And all of that's going to be basically drawn up into rules and regulations for the actual vendors. So that we have things in there, for example, such as shared data, if it's something that we want to look into, particular restrictions and penalties for when their users aren't obeying the law or obeying the rules. So all of that sort of gets baked in into the contracts and the permitting requirements. And that's what the consultants are going to help us develop amongst additional community engagement and additional work.
Well, I think all of that information is very useful, but that's not completely consistent with what your agenda item says. Your agenda item says, start the permanent program on November 1, 2023. So that presupposes that all that information that we are going to get results in us deciding that this program should, in fact, be permanent. What if the information and the statistical survey comes back and there's a great deal of opposition or some of the problems that have been identified cannot be addressed to our satisfaction? I just, I feel like this is written with a presupposition that the program will be made permanent.
So the direction by council last September was to extend the temporary program and return with the proposal for a permanent program. And so we are returning with a proposal for a permanent program. And of course, if it turns out that the information we're gathering from this consulting firm and public input results in a decision that the council wants not to install the permanent program, that's certainly the prerogative of the council to do that.
Well, I have no problems with extending the temporary program despite the fact that there are a number of people who don't like it at all. But I think if we're going to try to make our decision based on data, we should wait until we get accurate and complete survey results before we make any decision to make this permanent. And I feel like your item really, as I said, compels us to support a permanent program. And I'm not ready to do that until we have the kind of information that I thought we were going to get as a result of this consultant. Thank you, though.
Councilmember Byers.
Thank you. I arrived at the meeting tonight understanding that I, coming into council, it's sort of a timeline around this item that today we are about, or this item is about, moving towards a permanent program while continuing to do the work to collect information about what would make that permanent program the best program for our city possible. It made sense to me that we would be doing some maybe parallel processing, extending the temporary pilot program to ensure that we're continuing to gather information while moving towards a permanent program that we're still not ready to implement today at this time. But having a date on the calendar made sense to me. I can understand if my colleagues want to collect more information before asserting to the public that we're ready to move towards permanence. As I stated, I came tonight ready to help move us towards that direction. But if we want to create another moment of pause based on that, I just wanted to sort of understand for my colleagues if that's what we're talking about and clarify with staff that that's sort of an opportunity we can have.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Francisco or John, how many scooters are in West Hollywood on any given day?
About 350.
And we use three companies still?
It's only two.
Only two?
Yeah.
And that's Lyft?
Lime and Bird. Lime and Bird, correct.
Lime and Bird. If we wanted to, we could just do Lime or just do Bird, right?
Well, right now, we have opened it up to folks that can meet the particular operating requirements, which have only been Lime and Bird. We could, as part of the, for example, RFP process, only limit it to one, if we went through that process.
That's the question. I'm saying, there's obviously concern about them being everywhere, all of the comments that we've heard. If we wanted to, or if the council wanted to at a later date, they could make the RFP exclusive to one, correct?
That's correct.
And then the number of scooters, 350, let's just say it's split down the middle, could also be cut in half if you wanted to.
That's correct.
Do you have the most recent heat map of scooter usage? We used to get them. I don't know if you have them.
I can pull it up.
Could you?
I believe so. Give me a second.
Sorry, I forgot to tell you this earlier.
I won't be able to do it on the fly, but I can do a quick search. If you want to go to other questions, I might be able to pull that up.
Oh, yeah. No, that's fine. I just think it'd be beneficial for the public to understand how many people have recently used it, all of the things that you've always presented on in the past. Because that way, you can see how, you know, X amount of people used it versus number of complaints, the stuff that we normally heard. So that's my last question, Mayor. So whenever Francisco or John are able to discuss that. But I'm happy to pass it back to you.
Thank you. A lot of the questions I was going to ask have been asked. So you're going to, should we wait until you get the information? We can go to public comment and then afterwards answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Anne Jamvisante.
Bird has still yet to comply with what you stated in September, which was to make sure that their technology was, to make sure their scooters were not operable on the sidewalk. Today, I almost got ran over by a Bird scooter on the sidewalk with no notice from the scooter itself notifying, get off the sidewalk. Lime's, most of their scooters say, get off the sidewalk, but the speed of the scooters is not reduced when it's yelling at them. And it doesn't stop them either from riding on the sidewalk. I nearly got checked by two scooters on Lime today. If you're John Eric Potem Erickson, if we're going to rely on one corporation, Lime or Bird, to operate in the city, that's a monopoly, you might as well just make it public service. And the city of West Hollywood own the transportation rather than leasing it out to a corporation where they make the profit and the city of West Hollywood gets less funding. Makes no sense. Please increase the budget for 2023 to 2024 for more city planners, more specifically, transportation planners, because obviously, they're understaffed, their reports lackluster. And I think that a final thing that really should happen if you're going to hire more planners at all is for them to understand the concept of a charrette when the community comes in together and redesigns the area collectively with other residents. That's what matters, and that's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be relying on a few people to design and a few people to approve.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Harker, followed by Kathy Blavis.
Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. First of all, Mikey Friedman has been doing some excellent outreach to many people in the community to ban these scooters from the sidewalks. We have over 500 signatures as of today, and we will be obtaining many more who are opposed to these scooters. Many of us out here in Waho are trying to figure out why a private multimillion-dollar business scooter company is being allowed to ride roughshod over the citizens of West Hollywood. Has there ever been another business who was allowed to leave their products strewn about the streets and neighborhoods and then have the city enlist the security ambassadors to pick their product up and move them out of the way of pedestrians? Why are the irresponsible riders not being ticketed or fined? Perhaps we could have the ambassadors issue the citations and leave a ticket on each and every scooter left illegally parked and then fine the companies. They could pass it on to the rider who left it there. The scooter company must pay that ticket or pass the cost along to their customers. The companies must be required for proof of liability insurance of their customers. They are not now. Until you hold people financially responsible for breaking laws, they will continue to do so. Most of the scooters are used for fun and entertainment. There are few who have actually used them for alternative transportation. The safety hazards that these motorized vehicles cause for all pedestrians and disabled people specifically is abhorrent.
15 seconds.
Safety of pedestrians must trump the profit margins of the scooter companies. Too much money has been spent on this already. Let's have the last of the pilot program and find out if the citizens actually want these, because they are not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Blavis, followed by Rick Watts.
Hi. Good evening. Kathy Blavis, City of West Hollywood. This is a daunting task, because I can't see how these can be regulated. I park on my driveway, and a couple of years ago, my car was sticking onto the sidewalk, sticking out on the sidewalk about an inch and a half. I got a ticket around 9:00 PM. At 12:02 AM, I got a second ticket. So you can't, I just, I use that as an example for accountability. I had a ticket I had to pay. Maybe the scooters that are left need to be booted so they can't be used again until a fine is paid, just like if you have too many parking tickets. They're so dangerous on the sidewalks. I would like to see a survey by a consulting firm who only take a survey by going around our city either in a wheelchair, using a walker, a baby stroller, crutches. I'm hard of hearing. I never hear when I'm about to be hit. The disability community is really suffering as a result of these. And talk about putting the cart before the horse. I mean, yeah, the cart before the horse. The other day, I saw a face-off between a robo-cart that was trying to deliver and a scooter in the middle of the sidewalk, and the cart was at a standstill. And this is how the disabled community feels and enabled community. So I thank you, Councilmember Heilman, for putting this in perspective, because that's how I, as a community member, read this item tonight. So again, I don't know how these are going to be regulated. The idea of saying, having the scooter say, while you're riding it, that you're on the sidewalk, doesn't prevent anyone from being on the sidewalk. So good luck with all of this, and community, community, outreach, outreach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Watts.
Thank you, Council. I want to echo pretty much everything that was said by the prior speakers. And I want to thank Councilmember Meister and Councilmember Heilman for pointing out some of the obvious things. I want to remind all five of you, as well as the city attorney and city manager, how it is that Bird and Lime first arrived in this city. They just dumped their products on the street. No permitting. They just dumped them. Riding, to use Stephanie's word, roughshod over the laws and the regulations that you and sheriffs and staff are responsible for drafting and enforcing. And they still have not taken responsibility for what they did then, what their riders continue to do now, the injuries that they cause, the hazards that they cause to persons with disabilities, the inconveniences that they cause to persons with disabilities, persons with mobility issues, with sight limitations, hearing limitations. It's not just people that are in wheelchairs, although they too end up in Mexican standoff with the, if you'll pardon the expression, with the food carts that will not back up or yield. But the scooters are a real hazard, as Councilmember Meister's sister knows very well. Nailed while stepping out into a crosswalk in a green light. Ended up in the hospital. Other people in other cities have been killed. These never should have been allowed on our streets, and they shouldn't be now.
Mayor, we have two speakers on Zoom for this item. Our first speaker is Mikey Friedman, to be followed by Jamie Francis. Mikey, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Mikey, if you can hear us, please press star six to unmute yourself. Mayor, we'll go to our next speaker to see if Mikey can come back on. Jamie Francis, you'll have two minutes. Please press star six.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, John Heilman, for at least using that inference of that we're basically hiring a consulting company of what you mentioned about presupposition of what we already know as these are dangerous on sidewalks. These are high-speed mobility devices that are not essential. It's for people who want to joyride. And to the point, I believe John Kehoe said, or someone else, that there are 350 dockless mobility devices. Well, what about those traversing and coming from the city of LA? I live right there on the line on Havenhurst, and there's four or five just on Sunset alone, past the den. And it's just ridiculous. I mean, us that are on foot, we can have severe collisions, not to mention one of the sitting council members whose relatives was brutally, I don't know, collided with and sustained really grave injury. None of us on foot want to be entangled and want to deal with life-threatening injuries due to someone forcing themselves on a sidewalk. Because they're not going to use the street. They don't want to compete with cars. So they're going to compete with those of us that they can intimidate and push over. That's what we are. We pedestrians are pushovers, and I refuse to be that way. They become E-Waste devices. They litter across the street, onto the sidewalks. You have to step over them. There should be a geo-fencing. Santa Monica implemented a geo-fencing policy because people were being maimed and seriously injured, but more so, residents were being pulled out and they were colliding with them, but more so, traffic and police officers. These people have... These people have--
Fifteen seconds.
Excuse me?
Fifteen seconds, Jamie.
People have-- Pardon?
Just wrap up. You have 10 seconds left, Jamie.
Okay, thank you. But I'm confused when you do that. So please be aware that we really are at a detriment, and we need to have you enforce and don't have someone consult when it's going to be in their favor, like John Heilman said.
Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up. Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up.
Okay, but can you please be aware, I get the warning, but it's confusing.
Thank you, Jamie. Mikey, you will have two minutes. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, John Heilman. Staff, why are you bending over and city council to accommodate scooter companies by spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on out-of-state consultants? Item 4D, $116,000. Item 5B, $75,000. 4D can put us in jeopardy, and then 5B can take us out of it and make us safer? This makes no sense, and it's hypocritical. What if you conduct the poll, like John said, of WeHoans, as you promised, and they vote to ban the scooters? And not a vendor's poll, a real poll. This is money wasted if this happens. Why don't you wait on 4D until you get the results of the poll? You might not even need 5B if the scooters are banned. A resident who was hit by a scooter wants me to ask, if we keep rental scooters, what will the city or the scooter companies do to protect us? She got no insurance help, and she wants insurance in black and white. She's got nothing because her house, his household insurance didn't help her, and the auto insurance only covers four-wheel vehicles. And on this extension to the pilot program, Attachment A was signed by John Keigho and a lady from the company last year. And there's stipulations in the agreement, I read it, that protect both the city and the company, but nothing for us. Although my petition has over 500 signatures, some activists are giving up. They say you won't ban the scooters, and you won't even enforce the law.
Ten seconds.
So why bother? Well, I'm going to keep trying. You say nobody complains to you, but people talk to each other, and they say it's a huge problem. I'm telling you something. City sidewalks are considered a program of the city and are required to be accessible to individuals with disabilities. In the city of what probably was--
Thank you, Mikey. Your time is up.
--the ADA coordinator and a designated employee within the city government to assist anybody that wants to make a complaint.
Thank you, Mikey.
And if there's not something like that--
Thank you, Mikey. Your time is up. Thank you.
I understand. I just want to say, bottom line, stop throwing away money on consultants--
Thank you.
--and protect your citizens--
Thank you, Mikey.
--by banning the rental scooters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that was our last speaker on Zoom on this item.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any discussion and comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, question, yes. I have a question, too, actually, before we go on. And you were waiting for your answer, too, from staff.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Do you have that, Frances Gore, John?
Yes. So because of the technical issues, I'm going to ask the city clerk to bring that up on the screen. So just a second.
We don't need to screw with the--
I know. It's a static JPEG, so--
That's okay.
Okay. So that, this map is showing all of the rides from the inception of the program?
So the map covers July 1st, 2021 through today, and that's all of the different parking events. So every single time a scooter ride ends, that is what you are seeing in the formation of a heat map.
And do you know how many of this actually entails?
I know the trips, the exact, oh, 302, over 302,000 events.
302--
Thousand parking events.
Parking events. So then that's, you said that's the number of trips?
No, parking events, not trips.
Okay. So for the last, well, however, so 302,000 people, let's just say, have used scooters to get somewhere in West Hollywood?
Actually, the trip count is a little bit higher because it can--
I'm happy for all the information you could give.
The trip count is actually over 400,000. That includes trips that originate outside of West Hollywood, and that may end inside the city as well. So, but it's over 300,000.
Great. So you said 400. Do I just hear 300?
No, we can conclude that it's 300,000 unique events in the city of West Hollywood, but the number of rides is over 400,000, but it may include rides that originate from outside of the city.
Great. Thank you. And how many complaints have you gotten?
That I would need to pull up really quickly.
I used to remember, we used to, do you remember, you remember the map I'm talking about? Or the graphic that would be sent out?
The, where it would show the different travel patterns on the streets?
No, not the travel patterns. The one that you logged, because we logged it, the number of times you got a complaint, you rebalanced a scooter, that type of stuff?
Correct.
So that's what I'm asking for.
I am going there really quickly on my phone.
And if you don't have that number right now, it's totally fine.
I was going to interject that while he's looking that information up, I know there is concern about, you know, the starting of a permanent program without a touch point. So if it helps, we can certainly schedule a meeting on this. I think it's the first meeting in September where we could bring the item back, the results of the analysis and the study and the poll, the survey. And then that could be a place where the council, if they wanted to, have that final vote to make something permanent or not.
That's great. And then while he's getting that, I have a question. We had given direction months ago for the scooter companies to institute speed reduction technology. I believe about two, three months ago, or two months ago now, I was told that the sound is on on the scooters, but not the speed reduction technology. Why has the speed reduction, first of all, been instituted yet?
No, there is sidewalk detection technology that encompasses the audible alerts and then the slowdown technology you're referencing. The slowdown technology has not been implemented, but the audible technology has been implemented.
I understand that. Why has the slowdown technology not been implemented?
I don't want to speak for the companies. I believe they added a couple of memos to the packet. But from what we understand is that the technology is still being developed to make sure that it's precise, stopping somebody that may be riding in the street when the technology thinks that they're on the sidewalk could create a collision or slowing a scooter down drastically that may be in a bike lane could cause another collision. So they're being extremely cautious with the development and rollout of it. But they've both given commitments that it would be ready for, I want to say, quarter three.
Quarter three of this year?
I believe so, yes.
I will not be voting for a permanent program until that is in place and we have data coming back to us. And honestly, this is actually unacceptable. They literally told all of us who were testing these scooters at the time, I know Councilmember Byers was not on council then, but Mayor Protem Erickson was. And I'm sure he'll agree that when we rode and Councilmember Heilman didn't get a chance to get rise with them, they literally let us know that this was a technology that they were going to institute. So I don't believe, or should I say, we need to put more pressure on them. Why aren't we putting more pressure? Because it was actually a council vote. It was pretty unanimous. I'm not sure if Councilmember Meister voted for it because she may have voted no, but it was a four-to-one vote from council now over at least a year ago.
I do want to say I believe that the companies that committed to that are no longer part of the, are actually not seeking to participate in the pilot. I think it was Link or Super Pedestrian and a company called Spin that were the ones really advocating and pushing for this technology. And Lime and Bird are the ones that have been making the actual advancements with their manufacturing and technology. But that's my recollection. I'd have to go back through my notes exactly what the commitments were. But those two companies have since decided not to participate in our pilot. And then to give you an update on the number of complaints that have been logged, this isn't all-inclusive. This is only what we're aware of, is 1,128 complaints for the duration of the program so far.
How many rides have there been?
403,000 trips.
How many of the complaints are from the same people?
I don't have that specific number right now.
Well, no, I'm not trying to say the name out loud. But what I'm trying to say is that we all get lots of emails. And so I think that's an important statistic. I think it's important. We get complaints, and you log them appropriately as complaints, but--
So why did those two companies not want to participate? Do we know?
What they shared is that they're going to, one company decided to focus on established markets and not looking to start any new type of business. And the other company felt that their priorities didn't align with the cities in terms of sidewalk detection technology development.
Okay, why?
That I couldn't tell you why. That seems to be like a business decision that they made.
Are there other companies out there, other than these four, that have sidewalk detection technology?
That I don't know.
Can we look into that? Because actually, I would like to know what the possibility of opening up the RFP to other companies that do have the technology, bringing some competition in, that would then push Bird and the other, Link, is Link?
Lime.
Lime to get moving faster to provide safety for our pedestrians.
Absolutely. We can look into that.
Okay. Any other questions? Or I think we're going to get into discussion at this point.
Yeah. Mayor, it sounds like, and I don't know if there is agreement, but I do think that there are several council members who would like to get more information, a statistically valid survey of our residents. So I think that's something that we need to do. Second, the study that has been proposed, if the council does decide to make this a permanent program, I do think we need as much information as possible to make sure it's done as effectively as possible. And as you mentioned, I think we need to look at ways to control the speed of the devices and other safety measures. So I would support that. I also would support the notion that we should not be saying anything about the permanency of the program until we get that information. I know that your schedule is to extend this at least until the end of October. And if we are to make it permanent, it would be in November. But I would hold off on any decision about permanency until we get the information. That timeline makes sense, but I don't want us to be committed to a November 1st, you know, rollout of a program if we need further information after we get back the survey results and we get the study results. So that's kind of where, I'd make that as a motion if it's not too late to do that.
Can we also add staff looking into potentially other potential companies there may be that have sidewalk technology? And if so, maybe coming back to us as a report and maybe us opening up the RFP process to bring others in?
Sure.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Great. Any other discussions?
Yeah, I'd like to say--
Yes, sure.
Okay. First of all, when we had the discussion, I don't know if it was last time or the time before, about the scooters being on the sidewalk, I thought that council majority said, this needs to happen as soon as possible, or we are stopping allowing them to go through our city if they don't have that technology. So I don't understand how it went this far without the technology, without staff coming back to council and basically saying, no, we're done. We're not doing it. We're not continuing this pilot until the technology is there and we do not see scooters on the sidewalk. So that I don't understand at all because that was definitely something-- I voted no because I find them to be dangerous, but I do remember that conversation. The other part of the conversation was the idea of the scooter companies having insurance for their riders because as much as the pilot, they say they take liability, I can tell you they do not take liability. They may take liability in case the city is sued. But if one of their riders goes into a person who just happens to be crossing a crosswalk with the light, guess what? They don't take liability. They actually have a, their contract basically says, we don't take liability. Rider, you have all the liability. So, and they don't check to see, does the rider have insurance to ride a scooter? No, they don't check that. They say that their scooters carry 235-pound max. Do they have technology that checks the weight of a person when they get on? I could tell you they don't because a 280-pound person ran into my sister. So that is another thing that we have not discussed, or we did discuss, but there's nothing in your report about insurance. There's nothing in your report about checking the weight and that technology. The other thing is I don't understand why we, as a city, are absorbing the cost for running this program. They should, if they want to be in our city, they should be paying to be here. We should not be paying to have staff, consultants, we shouldn't be paying consultants. They should be paying it. We approved something, well, council majority approved something at a couple of meetings ago that basically said we are paying, the city is paying to run the program. And that, the whole reason we got out of the electric bike program that the city was running was because it was costing us so much. So here we are, again, paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to run a program that's hurting our residents, that we haven't even asked our residents, do you want this program? This is taxpayer money that we are using to run a program that we don't even know if the residents want. The other thing I will say is that what I've noticed is that people who own their own scooters or electric bikes tend to be more responsible than people who are just renting to do the joyride thing or whatever, to come into our city or go through our city. And so it's not that I am against alternate mobility. I think that people are more responsible when it's their vehicle. They're less likely to do something illegal, and they are more likely to make sure their vehicle is locked up somewhere where it's out of the public's way. They're not going to just leave it in the middle of a sidewalk when they're done with it. They're going to take it home. So I am supportive of us doing a survey among our residents, a scientific, random survey among our residents to find out if they want this program. I'm supportive of looking at alternate companies if that's, you know, if that's the way this is going. I am supportive of making sure that we do not put the cart before the horse, as Kathy Blavis said, that, as Councilmember Heilman said, that we do the survey, we get-- Blaiver said, that, as Councilmember Heilman said, that we do the survey, we get, we get the study results, and then we, then we think about spending another $100,000 on a consultant to come up with a, with a plan for a permanent program, if that's what we decide to do or what council majority decides to do at the time. But I just, I just, I don't, I don't understand why we are allowing Bird or Lime to actually even operate in our city after council majority was very clear that they did not want anyone riding on the sidewalk that didn't have the tech, that they had to have that technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, thank you, former mayor. I do want to say that we did vote on the council, the sidewalk safety technology. And I think what happened is they instituted half of it, but not the other half. And that's the issue. So, so I guess it's that loophole or that's been happening. And as far as the insurance question, I remember you did bring it up, and I believe the direction was for the city attorney and staff to have meetings with the companies and discuss the options, but I didn't see anything. So perhaps we can get an update back, or if that hasn't taken place, has that taken place, that discussion or possibilities?
So that's part of the study that we're gonna be conducting. So that's gonna be, I'll be wrapped in, into the discussion of the permanent program.
Okay.
And being able to include some of those insurance requirements within the framework of the vendor permit.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Protam Erickson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, in regards to other surveys and other outreach we've done, I mean, the city doesn't have a wall around it. So who comes in, who leaves, it's important to get their input and feedback. For example, if we wanted to say, do you love our restaurants? We wouldn't just go to residents in the city. Obviously, we would go to them, but we would ask everyone. So, I mean, I understand asking residents, but the number 400,000 and 302,000 shows that, much like West Hollywood, it is bigger than itself. So I will support this as long as it's not pigeonholed to that idea, because that's a very limited idea, in my opinion. We want to get phone calls and good input. So if you wanted to add into their phone calls to residents or however this consultant would do it, I think that's important by doing those direct calls. But we want to have a statistically valid survey, but it's the height of hypocrisy if you say you want it for this, but you don't want it for this. Especially like the, I, you, people know that we've done multiple things like that that have engaged with other people. So let's just call a spade a spade. So I will support it as long as we're not limiting it in that way. And then Mayor Shine is absolutely right regarding the speed control technology. Did I hear John or Francisco or Kobe, did you say that the companies that had that technology left? And so that's why there's only two? I kind of broke up for me.
Yeah, the two companies that demoed the technology never followed through with becoming part of the pilot program. They decided to focus their efforts elsewhere.
Right. But Lime and Bird have the technology. They just have to activate it, correct?
That is correct.
So we, I think we make that very clear.
Sorry, sorry, Councilmember, if I get it. So I think where, I think a little bit of the loophole conversation that happened. So they, they claim that they have the sidewalk detection technology, but what you do when you actually detect that a rider is on a sidewalk is approach differently. So one of the scooter companies has that audible alert. I think both, both companies have the audible alert. And so in their minds, they're already complying with our requirement for sidewalk detection technology. What we needed to be more specific about was that we wanted the throttling of the scooters on the sidewalk. So that's where they're saying, well, we're complying with, they're working on that now. It's, what's, what's happening is that they actually have to sort of geocode our entire public right-of-way, which takes a little bit of time. So they're doing that in order to really have a precise measurement of where the sidewalk begins and where the street begins, so that they can map that and put that within their, you know, geo-location technology and then be able to slow down the scooter. So that just takes a little bit of time because they, they themselves had not developed that technology, but they're developing it now as part of our request. It just takes a little bit of time to geomap the entire city.
How much money are these scooter companies making in our city?
Yeah, we don't collect that information, so we don't have it.
Are we getting any money from their use in our city?
Currently, they pay a $5,000 quarterly operator fee. And that's something that we're gonna reevaluate with the consultant should be directed to...
Could you say that again? I didn't hear you.
$5,000 quarterly fee from each company. And it was 40,000 rides?
400,000 rides.
400,000 rides in our city. Let's say, I've ridden scooter, so it's six bucks at least a ride. How much is that?
Six times 400,000? 2.4 million.
2.4 million, and we get $5,000. This is a really bad deal for West Hollywood. So I just want to be clear. I support alternate mobility. I support us, there are people in the city that are residents and that do use the scooters, and it is really important for us to move into the future. But the way we're moving is not safe. It is not good for our economy. This is a really bad contract. And quite honestly, that's a lot of money for them to lose. And they are using this loophole. So actually, I just want to pause this program personally until they institute this technology, the sidewalk technology, and then pick it back up. And that's how I feel. Councilmember Byers.
Thank you. I, I don't know that a pause in this is the best way to continue moving this forward in a way that keeps everybody engaged in this program. The flaws in it are certainly enumerated here tonight. It's very clear that the sidewalk technology can be improved. As somebody who rides it, scooter, getting shouted at while I'm on the scooter, safely traveling in a bike lane because it's close enough to the sidewalk, there are issues in the technology for sure. And I'm glad that we're in conversation to get more nuanced about how to deal with those. My concern in pausing the program altogether would be losing ridership. What people do is come to expect, depend, become reliant on these scooters. Already throughout the, the program's pilot run, we've changed and transformed what people can come to expect. I think, you know, creating a pause which would remove these from the streets altogether would also signal to our community in different directions that the potential for these to be lost altogether is where the conversation has currently arrived. I would ask that this body do the precarious and difficult work of continuing to work with these scooter companies while we continue to support this temporary pilot in a way that helps get us towards something that the community can see and understand clearly as permanent. And the sidewalk technology, again, folks riding on the sidewalks are often doing so for their own sense of safety as well, given the limited space allocation for these, or for these scooters to exist otherwise. So this slowdown technology and finding that language and finding that opportunity to connect with these scooter companies and get that piece of the work done feels like the work on the table. And I would hope that we aren't necessarily trying to pause the program in order to get there.
Well, I just don't know if we, if we don't pause it, how do we get there, Councilmember Byers? And yes, people, the whole point of having the safety slowdown is people can stay on the sidewalk because we don't want to force people when we don't have all the infrastructure and make them unsafe. What is our, what is our negotiation opportunity to negotiate a better deal for our city, more than $5,000 in this program a quarter?
I don't have the contract in front of me, but it's a, it's a pilot program. And so I do think we have some ability to figure out a better program for the city because it's, we're trying to determine what's best for, for this community. So I think there are negotiating tools that we have.
Okay. I would like to, Councilmember Heilman, if we can add an additional direction to your motion, that staff work diligently to negotiate a better return to us, given that the scooter companies are clearly making millions of dollars. A $5,000 return is, is, is not a good deal.
Yes, I think that should be on the table. And I think we should include that, and I'm glad to include that in the motion. If we do go forward with this and make it a permanent program, I think that's got to be part of the direction we've given staff to negotiate a much better deal. And I also agree with your view that we need to be pressuring the companies to implement the speed-limiting technology that had been promised previously by other providers. But that needs to be something that is a priority, even as this study is going forward.
And maybe what it is, is, because I hear Councilmember Byers, people do use it and they have gotten used to it, and it would be throwing them off in their, in their commute if we just pause it. What if we put a deadline that is not quarter three, but three months from now? That's what we did actually last time, didn't we, Mayor Protam? We said by January, if you don't do it, then you're out of the program. Three months for them to institute, I mean, that's how we put pressure on them.
You know, add the devil's, you know, argument here. Is that, well, are we gonna remove bikes from sidewalks then? Because technically, bikes should not be on sidewalks. It's in our code that they can use the sidewalks where there's not a bike lane, but people don't follow that either way, shape or form. So if we're gonna do one, we can't holistically look at the other and not touch it as well. I don't have insurance for riding my bike. So I'm just saying that we can't do one and we can't do the other. So I'm supportive of, Council, sorry, Councilmember Heilman's motion of the statistically valid survey, however you want to phrase it, the speed control, the permanency after we get the information, the negotiating fees. And then regarding the sidewalk technology, that if these companies, let's say we get the results back and they're all like, good, great and grand, right? And the companies are like, okay, great, we don't have the sidewalk technology. Then it's a no-go. Then it's, I agree with you, Mayor Shine. That's, that's, I think, the linchpin. So in order for them to be permanent, it has to be on. And to Councilmember Meister's point, we are paying in whatever way you want to put that dollar amount there. So I understand that it takes them a while to do certain things, but they need to get it done in order to get this reward. So I think that's kind of where I was at in order to, to finesse it in that line. And I don't know if anyone...
Okay. I think we should give them three months to get the sidewalk technology geocoded and everything. Because what I'm hearing from staff is they're literally saying, well, we're already doing this, so we can just sit back. And then if it's three months, it gets instituted by June, then, then we have till September, right, to do the survey, get all the information. And it's actually based on information. It could actually make the permanent program more, come around quicker if, if, if all the successes are happening together. Those are just my thoughts, but...
Can I suggest, Mayor, that we come back with an update in three months and let you know where we are as far as negotiations? It's just because we don't control the technology, we can't ensure that it's gonna be done in three months. But we can certainly let you know if they're getting close or not. And if they're not, then you can make that decision if you want to stop moving forward with them or not.
Okay, as long as you make it clear that we're gonna make a decision of not moving forward potentially, if in three months, they, they, you know?
Yes.
They don't have, they don't have it together instead of quarter three. Okay.
And we may have some better idea about the...
Other companies and fees, okay. Thank you. So John, did you, Erickson, Mayor Protam, did you second the motion?
Yes, yeah, I, I think I seconded some form of motion, but if Councilmember Heilman wants to restate it, just for clarity, I'm happy to second whatever he says again.
So I think that what I'm hearing is that, number one, we want a statistically valid survey of residents. We want to demand that the companies institute the speed-limiting devices within three months, or staff will give us a report or an update in three months. We want the study to be completed of best practices. We are not going to move forward with a permanent program until we get that information. And there was one other thing. Oh, and we want to give staff direction to negotiate a much better and much better financially agreement if this program is to be made permanent.
Councilmember Heilman, I thought that we weren't going forward with the best practices until after we got the information from the survey. Because to spend the money on the consultant without having that information, we may decide that it shouldn't be permanent. And especially if they can't get their act together with the technology to slow down the scooters.
Well, let me just ask staff in terms of the consultant that's on our agenda tonight. In terms of the timeframe, if we're extending this until the end of October, will that, if we do a survey of residents first, will that then give you sufficient time? Let's assume the survey says, we love the scooters and we want the city to make the program permanent. If that's the result, will that give you sufficient time to develop the, the best practices after we get that result?
I would probably say that we would probably need additional time because setting up the survey and then following up with a study after that would probably, we would require an even further extension of the pilot program because we would need to then basically pick up all the scope of services that weren't done initially.
Then I'm okay with that, as long as we understand that the pilot program might then get extended while we're, you know, after we get the result. Or if the result is negative, we might decide not to continue the program and make it permanent. So I'm agreeable to that. And I don't know if Councilmember Erickson is also agreeable that we will wait for the study until after we get the survey results. I see him nodding his head.
Yeah. And Councilmember Heilman, are you okay with making sure that others outside of residents are also able to participate in the survey since the trip number is quite, there's a lot, many, 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 many times the city population?
I want to make sure that we do get a separate result of residents. I'm okay with using other devices to get information from those who are riders who might be visiting West Hollywood.
Okay. I'm sure the consultant knows some way on how to do that.
Right.
As long as this survey of the residents is, is random and statistically significant.
Okay, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Erickson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, Mayor, just to clarify, so we're going to move forward with a portion of the contract, at least the portion of the scope of services that entails doing the surveys. And we'll kind of put a hold on the rest. So you're, okay. So just wanted to make sure that we're authorizing the contract to move forward. We just want to move forward with the entire scope. We would...
Yes.
We will first do the survey, bring those results back, and then proceed from there. Okay?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 5A, accessory dwelling unit roof decks in residential zones R3 and R4. I'm going to let staff get situated for this for a brief presentation.
This was my item, Mayor.
Oh, there you go. Okay, Mayor Protem, you're already situated. Please go ahead.
I'm not next to you to signal it. I'm just above you in a really weird Wizard of Oz way. I actually think that this item can be added to the survey of R3, R4 zones that we're doing, and so my, and I know I spoke with my colleague, Councilmember Meister, about this, but if we wanted to add this to that and not go forward with a complete ZTA, because we actually don't know what we would need to know to make a better policy until that time, so I'm happy to just amend this item to be for, in the study of R3, R4 zones, and that will all come back to us with this as a part of it at that time. But I'm open to any questions, my colleagues, Mayor Minogue.
Okay, I'm fine with that personally.
Yeah, I mean, I had, we had talked, and I had suggested that to not have it in the context of the R3, R4 study didn't really make sense, so it's, especially since we don't know what the impacts would be. So I appreciate Mayor Protem's flexibility.
Okay. Do we need to take, we need to take public comment on this? So any public comments on this?
Yes, we have Annie Jump Vicente.
Of course. Yeah, allow people to enjoy the space where they live and the space above where they live. For me, it's actually been extremely difficult to get out of my house lately, because I fear for my life every single moment. I'm actually petrified to leave my house. It would be nice to have a place to chill on a rooftop, to enjoy some sun away from people, and actually have a feeling of safety. That would be really nice. I don't believe my building allows for that, since it's over 100 years old and the landlord's a prick. Yeah, since public spaces are very difficult to utilize, as in the street, and street performers were just questioned today, and we should allow people to just chill wherever the hell they want. I just, just push this forward. I don't see why it's even on, I don't see why it wasn't on consent. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more speakers.
All right, so let's make a motion.
I...
Mayor Protem?
I...
Yes, would you like to make a motion on your item?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I would like to move that we add this to the study of the R3, R4 zones, and for it to come back with that package.
Great, and seconded by...
I would second it.
Councilmember Meister, may we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilman?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Aye.
And Mayor Shine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, moving to item 5B, consultant to conduct a citywide disability access study, which is an item that Councilmember Byers and I worked on. So I will go ahead and speak about this, and also allow Councilmember Byers to discuss it as well. We had heard from our community with disabilities, members of the Disabilities Advisory Board, former members of the Disabilities Advisory Board, and community members, that there is, there are access issues within our city, in city facilities, and all of the ways that we are wanting to bring on a consultant to really review access in all of these areas in partnership with the Disabilities Advisory Board, and really prioritize and show our community with disabilities that we are prioritizing their needs and access, which is essential. So this is why we brought this forward. We think it is worth every single penny, and we, there are also other access issues that are being looked at simultaneously in other areas. So this would give us a very holistic look at our community and how we can improve the quality of life and lives of our most vulnerable community members. Councilmember Byers, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. I think there's always room to bring in experts to help us consider things. Tonight, there was already a few items that were brought up, and one of the specific notes in the staff report is around increasing inclusion and engagement with the disabilities community through the platforms that we use and meetings and events, and this is the exact scope of work that I'm eager to see taken on. We want to make sure that our fabulous events are able to reach folks who may be unable to come, and this is an effort to help find ways that we can better meet people where they're at with the scope of meetings, events, services, and opportunities that the city holds. So happy to answer questions from our colleagues tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Byers, for bringing this forward. I think it is really important that we update the information we have to make the city as accessible as possible. I do know that we have previously done studies of the sidewalks and the curbs to try to address that aspect of accessibility. I don't know if staff has those reports, if that's something that has been shared with you. I just don't want us to be reinventing the wheel. I really view this as something where we could be updating existing accessibility studies that we've done, and then expanding as necessary. So I want to make sure that this money gets used in the best possible way. Has staff provided any information on things that we've done in the past?
We certainly can, but I guess I understand this item to go kind of beyond the ADA requirements of like sidewalks and things like that, the studies we normally do, but we can certainly provide those, as well as look at events and other things, which is my understanding, that this really moves towards like city facilities and events, and ensuring that people can have more accessibility above and beyond what's required by the ADA.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Yes, Councilmember Meister.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure when I read the item, were you looking to also do a survey of residents for their opinions about accessibility? Because if it did include that, I would say to not have that as part of this, and instead include that in the next community survey that we do, which should be, when is the next community survey? It should be soon, because we haven't, we haven't done one in a few years, and usually we do the community survey every two years, and that's a social services, you know, that's really focused on, on social services and those types of issues. So I think maybe we could fold that into that survey, that part of it. I mean, if that's, that was just my understanding. I may be wrong.
I think I would like the consultant to let us know what, because if we're going to do this, I don't want to not have, you know, have the consultant wait until then. Maybe the consultant can let us know what would provide the most comprehensive information, because this is very specific of what we want to have, and the outcome that we want from that, and potential changes to make. But certainly, if we don't want to double, pay double what we don't need to if a survey is going to happen, and take that into consideration. Mayor Protem, do you have any comments?
No, I support the item.
Okay. Any public comments on this?
Yes, Mayor, we have three in person and one in Zoom. The first speaker here in council chambers is Stephanie Harker.
Good evening again. Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. Well, you know, of course, I'm in favor of this, and thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Byers and Mayor Shine. I just have to say, some of your predecessors, I've been asking for updates for certain specific things for at least the last 12 years. But Hart Park, for instance, has been out of compliance with the ADA since the city began. I know County of LA or City of LA owns that property, but I believe we're responsible for keeping it up. I don't think the disabled community, or anyone with a little mobility problem, should be having to wait for years on end and wait for studies to get done, and they spend money. Take the money you're spending on the studies and put a railing in on the ramp that goes up to Hart Park, up to the doggy park. As you all know, our former advisory board member, Mikey Friedman, has cancer took her arm, her dominant arm. She walks her dog, her balance is off. She literally cannot steadily walk up that long ramp. The parking, even though there is some accessibility parking there, then there's like a dip and along, there's no smooth path to it. I just don't understand why we have to wait until the whole park is redesigned to make it accessible to people who need it. I've been asking for a signer for ASL people to, at, which we had none of during the whole pandemic. The, there was no accessibility to information by people who are profoundly deaf and who cannot read subtitles. And this very room, we used to have the Gene Dobrin, now there'll be the Gene Dobrin Memorial screens here with captions on them.
Thank you, Stephanie, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But let's do something now on an emergency basis, and then get on with the study. But follow the ADA. It's been in existence for 33 years.
Thank you. The next caller is Annie Jump Vicente, followed by Rick Watts.
Considering the lackluster report from planners, you're definitely going to want to redo studies, Mr. Heilman. So, yeah, these disability studies are definitely going to be needed for updating, since now there's at least, including this, one would have to be three now, one with the scooters, one with Santa Monica Boulevard specifically, because as I recall, one or two meetings ago, you passed a motion for a survey there as well for bikelings. You have a lot of different, Lauren, I think you said this, a lot of different surveys conducting right now, or John even said this, about disability. Yeah, combine them. They are all inherently one thing, whether it's transportation, public, residential, or private companies. It's literally all linked together. It's how we move around. It's transportation for disabled folks. That was loud. Yeah, so, oh, 54 seconds. Yeah, I definitely think that there needs to be some significant increase in disability usage for pedestrian areas, so that disabled folks can move around way more freely around those who are able-bodied and have more room to do so, instead of feeling like they might fall over, as the woman just spoke behind me. Implement protections through this survey, and also, I think that you all forgot to fine the scooter companies last time. 12 seconds. You forgot to fine the companies last time in your last motion. They violated the law, and now you're conducting a survey in order to address it. They, fine them.
The next speaker is Rick Watts.
Thank you, Council, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Byers and Mayor Shine for bringing forward this motion. The various disabilities communities, and I use the plural of that because they are multiple communities of persons with disabilities, whether it's mobility, or sight, or hearing, mental, emotional issues and so forth. This is why the Disabilities Advisory Board exists, and is supposed to serve as a conduit between you, the Council, to help you make policy and to feed information back down to the, to those communities, or from information, complaints, suggestions from those communities back up, to help promulgate better policies. Throughout COVID, we've been meeting, we have been meeting by Zoom, and that's about to end. And when that ends, persons with many of those disabilities will no longer have the option of being able to participate, because we will be moving to Plummer Park Rooms 5 and 6, which are not equipped to be set to, for hybrid meetings. The EOC is evidently, according to staff, is not an option. And we've known this is going on, that it's going to happen for quite a while. We have one of our own members who is about to become severely immunocompromised because of pending chemotherapy, and Plummer 5 and 6 have still not been set up. You'll be locking out the participation by that member, as well as by members of the public, who are, for various reasons, unable to participate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy LaViss. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, you signed up for 5B. We're now going to move on to Zoom. We have two speakers on Zoom.
We just have one speaker now for this item. Jamie Francis, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention and reiterate, I appreciate Council making attempts or efforts, but as you see, West Hollywood is known for doing a lot of outside contracting with a lot of these companies. To refer to what John Heilman said a couple of years ago, there was a company that did an assessment, assessment on the Sunset Experience, and yet came to their conclusion because they conducted their own survey. And they also implemented the things that they thought would be appropriate for Sunset Boulevard for pedestrians, and yet it was counterintuitive. You don't have a third, you should have a third party, or very least, when you have a feasibility study, including residents. Get our feedback first. Let us engage. Don't do every couple of years where it's a citywide study of, because what happens, it mitigates and categorizes us to what residents want what. It turns to a preferential treatment, or preferences over what is important to each individual. I know we all have our biases and our preferences, because what, we're impacted on a daily basis. People with disabilities, we thought there would be walkability in the city, and there's becoming less and less walkability, less and less walking mobility that is being dominated by other forces of mobility. Now you have people who are not being considerate of traffic stops, of walking signals on Fountain Avenue in particular. People speed. They don't even, you know, stop at designated walking points for people to cross a crosswalk, or are being beat at because I'm in a crosswalk and people want to go on a roundabout on Norton, because they're impatient, or down Crescent Heights, or down Los Yenegas. We are really at the mercy of these drivers, these mobility, Doc List devices. People don't care. They want to get where they're going. Please be aware that we should give our opinions. There should be an in-person or a study to know who's disabled in the city, and then we can give our personal feedback, not at some random meeting, or calling in and having an hour to speak.
Thank you, Jamie.
Or a committee.
Thank you, Jamie, your time is up.
So, thank you very much. I just wanted to say that. So, thank you, John Heilmann, for just emphasizing and setting.
Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up, Jamie. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so.
Mayor, we have Kathy Levis.
Kathy Levis, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This hits really close to home. I started having hearing loss about maybe eight, eight or so years ago. And I was very honored to be Lauren Meister's appointee on the Historic Preservation Commission. I resigned, left that after serving for four years. Not 100% for this reason, but a very big reason was my hearing. At Rooms 5 and 6, as Rick Watts brought up, I could not hear. I didn't realize how bad it was until people started like this. And then, at one of our meetings, we got our minutes, verbatim minutes, which it was the first time we ever got a copy of verbatim minutes. And that's when I realized I was doing a disservice to Councilmember Meister and the community and myself. I decided then and there I would finish, finish my term, so to speak. It's not the only reason, but it was a very big reason, and it was sort of new to me to be in that position. Most of our meeting rooms, including this one, it's very difficult to hear. I will say that the, what we lovingly call the Gene Dobrin's hearing devices in this room are better than they have been, but they're still very positional. The battery runs out. And in the other meeting rooms, they're not as good. The fact that we cannot have meetings open to everyone in their home, regardless of whether in this chamber, or at Plummer Park, or anywhere. This is the 21st century. This is, everything is moving so fast. Where there is a will, there is a way. Every meeting should be able to be seen by, and heard by every member of this community, regardless of whether they're in their own home, watching it and listening to it on YouTube, or in this chamber. So, I hope you'll push this through very quickly and come up with the technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Excellent. It sounded like, are there any discussions, or can we move this forward? I'd like to make a motion to move this item forward and allow my colleague to second that, who was the co-sponsor working at it.
I just, Mayor, may I ask one thing?
Yes.
It's more of a comment. I remember, and hi, Stephanie, I'm sure you're still there. I remember when you brought the issue of a sign language interpreter up to me when I first got elected, and I addressed it, and I know the city comms team did. If anyone and Lauren, not Melissa, because she's not there, I just remembered, or anyone, if anyone requires translation services, a translator can be hired. And if anyone needs a sign language interpreter, we have those on contract to be aware, to come in. I know the idea is to have someone there constantly, which is what I was trying to do when I originally got elected. We didn't really take it forward, but those things all exist right now, correct? At any public meeting that we have?
Yes, there are opportunities if someone needs special assistance or reasonable accommodation to ask in advance, and the city's clerk office can make those services available.
And Mayor Protem, this study will also look at, look at that as well in a comprehensive way, because I know.
Yeah, no, I support this items. I was ready to move to consent.
Great. Let's get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilmann?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Aye.
And Mayor Shine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move to excluded consent, which is item 2Q. Let me put my glasses on to read, because I have lost my eyesight progressively. Construction period logistics plan and street and sidewalk closures for the private commercial development project located at 645 to 685 Robertson Boulevard, 648 to 654 LaPierre Drive, and 8954 Santa Monica Boulevard, Robertson Lane Hotel and Treehouse Project. Can we get a very brief presentation? And Councilmember Meister, you pulled this, so if you want to let us know what, you know.
Yeah, I'd really like the focus to be on Robertson Boulevard, what's going to be going on there, at what times, and for how long, and what's being proposed.
Thank you, very members of the city council. Excuse me, I can be very brief, or we can kind of cut to the chase with details. We have members of the project team here from Farring, the applicant on this project, who has every detailed answer that you're probably looking for.
Let's cut to the chase.
Okay, sounds good. With that, I'm sorry, let me introduce John Gilborn, our city engineer. And I'm Steve Campbell, your Director of Public Works. With us tonight is members of the Farring Group, who is the applicant on this project for the Robertson Lane project. And I think Jake has the detailed information you're looking for.
Sure, just very briefly. Thank you, Mayor Shine and city council. I'm Jake Stevens, Vice President at Farring, resident of the City of Los Angeles. I'll skip my spiel here. Councilmember Meister, in the attachments to this council item, I believe it's attachment B, that has a sidewalk and street use, six-month schedule interval, that literally breaks down each of the three frontages for each of the projects, Santa Monica, LaPierre, and Robertson Boulevard, explaining how all the movements are coordinated. But in short, we've gone through heroic efforts to move our construction barriers back to the property line every day by about midday, for as long as conceivably possible, to return all street parking on both sides of Robertson to all those local businesses that depend on it for nightlife. We've also made special accommodations for the Abbey and the chapel directly across the street from the project site. We're going to pay out of our pocket to widen the sidewalk on that eastern side of Robertson, maintain the trees that Mr. Cooley has requested be maintained in front of his specific business. And we're also working with him to make available other surrounding surface lots for the valet that his staff has come to depend on.
Can you please tell us why we need to cut down any of the trees on the east side?
Sure. The trees on the east side in front of the Abbey will remain. The remainder of the trees in front of the park, Robertson Gardens, are being removed and replaced to accommodate street widening, I'm sorry, sidewalk widening, rather, to accommodate all of the pedestrian volume that will come when we close the west side, and will be replaced with tree species that are compliant with the Design District Streetscape Master Plan at the end of the day.
Yeah, but they're not being replaced at that time. They're being replaced later on when the streetscape project is being done. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. They'll be replaced at the completion of construction when the temporary side dock widening on the east side in front of the Abbey is removed.
I don't understand if the streetscape project involves removal of trees in order to do underground work. So, you're going to be planting trees to just remove them?
No, no, no. As the project moves forward, the Design District Streetscape project moves forward, and the timeline with Robertson Lane becomes more clear on when those two kind of coincide. We'll either implement the Design District Streetscape as part of that project, or Robertson Lane project will implement that portion, and it'll be cohesive.
So, for how long will we be without trees on the east side of Robertson?
Until the Design District Streetscape project moves in. That's set to commence in 2025.
And the trees, so can you just tell me for how long the tree, there won't be trees on the east side during the construction?
Yeah, so we're going to take them down probably at the end of the year of this year, because the first six months of the site mobilization are completely within our property line and don't require sidewalk widening or taking any of the sidewalk. So, if I was about to guesstimate, I'd say about 20 to 24 months without trees there.
Can't we widen the sidewalk without removing the trees?
If we moved into the park that was recently constructed, we could widen the sidewalk in that direction. However, the trees that are there are not a desirable species for the city. We're having issues with those trees throughout the city, and in fact, are removing them. They're infected with a tipu psyllid, which is a species that's creating a lot of honeydew and problems for the residents. I'm sure you've all had emails from those situations in varying, you know, spots throughout the city. And those are those type of trees. And in fact, along Robertson, it's a, it's a major nuisance to people that park there. Those trees are set to be removed as part of the Design District Streetscape project, and we would support removing those trees to widen the sidewalk out to the curb for the interims, in the interest of safety for the people that are queuing for the Abbey and the traffic that's going to be, pedestrian traffic that's going to be moved to the east side of the street, perhaps going to the parking structure, or getting to Santa Monica along the Robertson corridor through the park.
Councilmember, essentially, we're picking up the tab for a tree replacement that the city would be paying for itself at some point down the line.
No, I get that. I just, I just hate the idea of pulling out trees while construction is going on, which, because trees actually help mitigate dust coming and just aesthetics.
Of course. And we have a very thorough dust mitigation program with rollerboards and watering and all types of dust abatement. And, you know, I will take that as a direction from you to make sure that we're not touching or considering touching those trees until the very last available moment, when it would absolutely be required to accomplish that sidewalk widening. We wouldn't take them out any day sooner. It doesn't serve us, but we would do it when we'd need to widen the sidewalk.
Okay. And can you let us know how, for how, how long, how many times Robertson Boulevard will need to be closed, and for how long, each of those times?
Certainly. I would, I'm sorry, I can't count off the top of my head. There would be numerous instances spread throughout the 36-month construction period. There would be numerous instances of street closure with local access only on Robertson, and that would only be in instances where we have no physical options to do anything else. So, when we're installing the excavation ramp, or cranes, or the mat pores for the foundations, those would be local access-only days, which we would notice weeks in advance. We'd work to make sure we're scheduling on, you know, days, as we've talked with all the local businesses. I've gone to West Hollywood West Residents Association. I've gone to Norma Triangle. I've gone to every single business on Santa Monica, Robertson, LaPierre, and Melrose surrounding the site. And everybody's agreed, they all understand, we've got enthusiastic support to please build this project. So, everybody understands they'd have at least a couple of weeks' notice of anything that that's, you know, to that level of impact, where we'd be diverting any traffic, but really working hard to respect all businesses, return all street parking at the end of the day, and make sure everybody can still use Robertson for as long as possible on both sides of the street.
Great, and I appreciate that. And can you just explain to me why you can't stage and have ingress egress just out of LaPierre?
Yeah, and this is not the first time we've heard that question. So, what we've done is shift as much as we possibly can over to LaPierre. We have talked about, you know, a number of lifts and winches that are used for moving materials and personnel in and out of the site. Unfortunately, there are a number of things that have to be done from the Robertson side, for example, concrete pores. Available concrete booms do not reach the length of an entire city block, so we have to do it from both sides, from LaPierre and Robertson and Santa Monica, to reach the middle of the block. We can't just park it on one side and project completely over the entire block. It's just, those materials and equipment are not, are not available, rather.
And by, by having the access that you're requesting in this item, because it's rare for us to see items at council for construction logistics. So, that's why I felt it was important to ask these questions.
Just like we did at 702 Doheny, yeah, when we came here for that.
Yes, but you're, you're the only ones that seem to, we seem to be seeing is, are your project, so that's why I'm asking the questions.
Well, we like to ask permission in advance. I know there are numerous construction sites that have similar setups that have not come before this council, and impede the public right of way, and take parking lanes without flagmen. We drive by them every single day. So, we're trying to do the right thing and be forthright in the interest of, you know, exceeding transparency, be here today for this receive-and-file item.
And I appreciate that, Jamie.
Of course.
So, by having the access on both sides, are you, is the speed of the construction, is it going to be a faster construction than it would have been otherwise?
Absolutely, and exponentially faster.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your staying with the rest of us.
Of course. Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Do you have questions?
No, I just wanted to thank our staff for working so carefully to try to mitigate the impacts of this very big project. And I want to thank Jake and their team for working to do so as well. I'm prepared to move the item if there are no other speakers.
Are there any public speakers?
Yes, we have two, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm having problems with my microphone. The first speaker is David Cooley. I don't know if he's still here.
David Cooley is not here.
Jacob Stevens? Oh, that's.
Jacob Stevens, City of Los Angeles. We've met with Mr. Cooley extensively. We've met with the managers of King and Queen, every one of those businesses, Soulmate, all of them. They say, please build. We appreciate that you guys are here. We're going to do everything that's required. Construction concierge, open for business signage. We've offered to schedule around days that are important to those businesses. So, everybody knows me, whether they like me or not, they know who I am, and they know what the project is, and they know that I'm there to help them and facilitate. Thank you.
Everyone likes you, Jake.
All right, thank you. So, we have then no more speakers, correct?
No more speakers.
Motion by Councilmember Heilmann. I'd like to second that motion and move this forward. May we get a roll call vote, please?
Of course. Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Heilmann?
Aye.
Councilmember Meister?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Aye.
And Mayor Shine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Now, we are at our last public comment period. This time is set aside for the public to address the council on any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council that could not be heard under item one at the beginning of the meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any additional public commenters?
Yes, we do. Mayor, we have Annie Jumpicente and Rick Watts. They have already addressed the council, and I'll leave it up to, to you.
Okay, we are at 11:05, and I am going to ask you both to just do one-minute comments, since you've already spoken at the beginning, because we are ending tonight's meeting at 11:30, and we still have council member comments.
So, at the beginning of this meeting, I expressed my concern for my safety. At the end of the night, I still feel extremely unsafe being in this room at this very moment, given what I, at least how I feel about some of the audience members, and how I feel like they've been staring at me this whole meeting, and it's kind of disturbing. This was an interesting night, I have to say. Tell you one thing, it definitely still isn't democracy, but at least I feel like you listened a little bit better, but still, it's still not democracy. This is, again, still us speaking to you, and then you paternally making the decisions for the infantile us. That's what, that's what this democratic system is. I would like to be able to participate more with equal power on both sides, so that we all have equal say instead of five. Hopefully, I would, and the rest of us, would feel safer after that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Watts.
Thank you, one last time. So, I just want to, now I'm going to put on my, my hat as Chair of the Disabilities Advisory Board, and I want to remind you that we do have three vacancies on the dab already, two of which have been vacant for quite a while. And I hope that as we go forward in the next month, two months, that we get those filled propitiously with folks that are good, qualified, well-meaning, play well with others, and represent the diversity of our city, and the diversity of the needs of the disabilities communities. And because we do have work to do, and I, and I hope that you will move forward with equal expeditiousness to get Plummer Park Rooms 5 and 6 set up for hybrid meetings, so that all may participate. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for tonight.
Thank you. Now, we are at Councilmember Comments and Meeting Attendance Reports. Councilmember Meister, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as attendance goes, I attended the West Hollywood
As far as attendance goes, I attended the West Side Urban Forum, the SCAG Joint Policy Committee's meeting, and the Regional Council meeting representing District 41, the West Side Cities. Also attended West Hollywood WeHo Chambers Annual Members Meeting and Board Installation. Congratulations to Mark Lehman on being bestowed the Ray Reynolds Award. Thanks to our staff, boards, and participants in the V-Day event and the MLK Day of Service and International Women's Day. Some of these, and I had several announcements, but the city manager took care of most of them, so if you're interested in what new digital billboards are being proposed on Sunset, the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee will be meeting at the Community Room of the West Hollywood Library on Thursday, March 9th at 6:00 p.m. You can always check out the city calendar for more information. And then last but not least, a special shout-out about a special event taking place at the LA LGBT Center on Wednesday, March 15th at 3:00 p.m. Ignacio Darnad presents Breaking the Gay Code in Art. This will be the first of a four-part lecture series. Ignacio is a longtime West Hollywood resident and West Hollywood West resident and artist, and he was able to get partially funded with an arts grant from the city to fund this very fascinating project. So congratulations to him, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Heilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the City Selection Committee as the alternate representative for the city. I wanted to let people know that before our next council meeting on the 19th, the LA Marathon will be running through West Hollywood, and want to wish good luck to all of the West Hollywood residents who are running in it or running in the half marathon for charity. There was a question at public comments earlier about consultants and contracts. We are in fact a contract city, and so we do contract for a number of services. I have concerns about the extent of some of our contracts at time, but I understand why we need to do that. And then finally, there were comments made about particularly the Disabilities Advisory Board and a number of them not being able to meet in person due to health concerns, and I'd like to ask our city manager and our city attorney to look at ways that particularly that board, but other commission and board members who have health concerns, how they can participate in meetings remotely. I know that there's some new law that just passed, which we had to implement tonight, but I think it's essential for our Disabilities Advisory Board members to be able to participate in some fashion if they're not able to participate in person at one of our facilities. So, thank you.
Councilmember Byers?
Thank you. Happy Women's History Month, all who recognize it, which I hope is everyone. I also just want to wish a joyous Purim to everyone who's celebrating that tonight. My meeting attendance, I'll note my attendance at the Clean Power Alliance meeting, where I also joined the Energy Committee. My attendance at the League of California Cities General Membership meeting, where we had the opportunity to learn about the new Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency and all the excitement to come with that. I just want to thank the volunteers who joined the MLK Day of Service and staff for bringing that amazing event together at WeHo Elementary, the International Women's Day event sponsored by the Russian Advisory Board, and the Catalytic Converter Etching Event, which was informational and fascinating and hopeful that we can bring another one of those valuable events to our community. I have some announcements I want to share. I'm very happy to be serving as the Chair of the Playhouse Design Subcommittee. We have our first meeting as a subcommittee next Tuesday, March 14th. I just want to express gratitude to everyone who participated in the design workshops that took place in the last month. There were a couple of those. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Nadia Sutton. I am so sad to not be there tonight. I hope I can meet you on the street and take a picture under your sign. And then I just want to speak to a few items on consent quickly. Just thanks to my colleagues for the recognition of Earth Day. I wanted those lanterns green, but learned a good lesson about why it's impossible to ever make those lanterns green. Makes a lot of sense, but we'll take the lights at City Hall. And finally, just a note on the resolution. I just want to thank Sukuru for coming to us as a city with this initiative. It was clear to me right away that the resolution condemning TEPCO and the country of Japan for this very quick and hasty decision to release nuclear wastewater into the Pacific, this would be supported by our city, and I'm really proud that we are among the first, if not the first, city to pass a resolution like this. I believe there will be many more cities, because this is very early in the timeline of this trajectory. I just want to say for a moment, our community has had a very incredible history of anti-nuclear campaigning and activism, going back to the founders of our city, including Helen Albert, who was arrested for activism at nuclear test sites. It was really just amazing timing that another community member uplifted Daniel Ellsberg for similar activism, so the spirit of anti-nuclear campaigning is very much alive and well, and I'm glad to see it back in our city, and thank you to Sukuru again for bringing this resolution to me and to us all. And then just lastly, I just want to say I unequivocally stand with the trans community and send love and solidarity to all communities and families and individuals who feel threatened and alone and isolated because of the bigoted and hateful and antidemocratic values expressed and applauded this weekend at the CPAC Convention and in other parts of the world and the communities. I'm very much supportive and excited to see the resolution that we'll be bringing forward condemning the heinous efforts in Tennessee and at that point probably in other states as well. Hope to see everybody at a drag brunch here in our community this weekend, and just want to wish my well wishes to our colleague. It's been fun, not fun, being online with you tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Pratim Erickson?
Oh, that was good, Chelsea. It has also been fun being here virtually with you all and the fours of people left in the audience. I wanted to just go through my meetings real quickly, which is probably how I got myself into this virtual mess. I attended the Contract Cities Ledge Committee meeting, the WeHo Reads event, the West Hollywood Chamber mix-and-mingle, the local hearing on the prep and pep, and I want to thank Hernán Molina especially, as well as all city staff that participated in that, and my colleagues for the unanimous support and continuing for that. The Clean Power Alliance meeting with the governor, where we advocated for CPA priorities, the WeHo Pride Subcommittee with Mayor Schein, Contract Cities Ballot Committee meeting. I attended the Center for Disease Control briefing on the shingliosis outbreak that's been going on. I don't know if people are aware of this, but I don't want to scare people, but there's another horrible disease that's being spread, and I believe it's hopefully getting under control, but I know the city of West Hollywood is monitoring it, and I want to thank staff who's been taking an active role in that. I too attended the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce Annual Membership Meeting before I had to go to work, so I want to thank Genevieve, congratulate Mark, and everyone that attended. It was really nice seeing you all. The Contract Cities Executive Board meeting, the Cal Cities LGBTQ Caucus meeting, the Sanitation District Orientation. I attended a California YIMBY Roundtable, the MLK Day of Service event, the Catalytic Converter event, and the International, I did not attend the International Women's Day because I have COVID. And so those are all the things. I want to just extend my thanks to my colleagues for the 5A, the rooftop ADU item and that study, as well as finding out the hard way, Councilmember Byers, but why we can't turn lights on Santa Monica red. You did green, I chose red for Red Cross Month, so we are on the same page in many ways. I also want to apologize to my colleagues for potentially getting them sick, but I'm glad everyone is taking care of themselves. This, it's not lost on me that the night we vote to rescind local restrictions for COVID, where also two of us are, well, one of us, my other colleague, I'm not going to divulge her personal health information, she's fine, I'm sure, but I am not, so there you go. And I just wanted to end on a quick note, congratulating Nadia. I have so many stories about Nadia. I love her so much, and Ruth, I just love Ruth so much, and she was like my mom here. So being sick and not being able to call Ruth, she would always send me pizzana. I'm only subscribed to their newsletter because of Ruth, but many other reasons. I'm really glad to see her join the ranks of the banners, because she deserves it. And happy Women's History Month, happy Purim, and thank you to all my colleagues for letting us be a little clunky in the beginning, but we caught the gist of it at the end.
Thank you, Mayor Pratim. I also want to wish our Jewish community a happy Purim this evening. Since our last meeting, I have attended and participated in the local public hearing on pep and prep, the WeHo Pride Subcommittee. I had my Sips with Seppi event at Dubbs Coffee on Fountain. It was wonderful. It is a black-owned business in our city, which are very few, and I encourage everyone to go, and they're an incredible family. I enjoyed connecting with neighbors and hearing their concerns. I attended our V-Day event, which was the 25th anniversary of V-Day. I attended the City Selection Committee meeting, not the same one that Councilmember Heilman attended. The annual member meeting for the WeHo Chamber of Commerce. I want to say congrats to Mark Lehman on your award that morning. I attended the LAUSD Virtual Legislation Meeting, our MLK Day of Service at West Hollywood Elementary this weekend, and all our colleagues were present, it was wonderful, and our International Women's Day event that our Russian-speaking advisory board organized. I wanted to share that it is going to be Persian New Year soon, starting with the Festival of Lights, which is the eve of Wednesday next week, where we gather together, it's called Char Shambesuri. We gather together and eat yummy food and jump over fire. I jump over a candle, because I don't want to light fire in the city of West Hollywood anywhere, and it's, the fire is going to essentially cleanse the darkness away and let the light in. And then Persian New Year is always at the Spring Equinox. So, [speaking in Iranian] please join the city of West Hollywood in partnership with the Iranian-American Women Foundation to celebrate Noorruz as part of the city's commemoration of Persian New Year on Sunday, March 19th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. in the city's council chambers. All are welcome to an all-inclusive celebration, which will feature poetry, a typical Noorruz table setup, and an incredible musical performance. For more information on this free event, including RSVP details, please visit www.wihoe.org/calendar. Noorruz lasts 13 years, 13 days from the Spring Equinox, and given the woman-life-freedom revolution and all of the sadness that the Iranian diaspora has been going through, we're all really looking forward to a time of celebration, so please come out and join This past weekend, at the Conservative Political Action Conference, Daily Wire host Michael Knowles called for the eradication of transgenderism. In his own words, he said, "There can be no middle way in dealing with transgenderism and can be all or nothing. Transgenderism must be eradicated from public life entirely. I would like to publicly and unequivocally denounce this kind of hateful, anti-trans rhetoric and bigotry that is damaging and results in further stigma, discrimination, and violence against trans people. The West Hollywood community will continue to support and uplift our trans brothers and sisters and non-binary siblings and speak out against this hate speech to ensure we are all treated equally with dignity and respect." And with that said, Annie, I just want you to know, I heard you today, and I hear you, and I have so much compassion and empathy for you feeling unsafe and the reasons why. And I'm going to invite you to get together, perhaps with our, have a meeting with our city manager, so we can discuss, so, and I'm happy to be there, so we can discuss ways that we can be helpful, because you shouldn't have to feel unsafe. And I get it, this is a very, very difficult time for so many communities, especially our transgender community, and you should feel safe in our city, and I hear your cries for help. Now, as part of my comments at each council meeting, I have made it a priority to provide updates on the situation in the Islamic Republic of Iran in light of the protests that began in September 2022 following the death of Mahsa Amini. Updated figures on the number of people detained and executed have not been publicly released. I do want to spread awareness on a current crisis that is taking place in Iran with suspected poisonings targeting school-aged girls. Since November 2022, over 1,000 girls in Iran have suffered from poisoning. Authorities have acknowledged suspected attacks at more than 50 schools across 21 of Iran's 30 provinces since November. Iranian media reports believe that number is even higher, with 60 schools being affected. Authorities have accused the enemies of the Islamic Republic of Iran of using the attacks to undermine the clerical establishment, but suspicions have fallen on radical groups operating as self-declared guardians of their interpretation of Islam. For the first time since the Islamic Revolution in 1979, school-aged girls have been joining the mass protests following Mahsa Amini's death. The attacks have raised fears that other girls could be poisoned, apparently just for going to school. Education for girls has never been challenged in more than 40 years since the 1979 Islamic Revolution. Making sense of the crisis remains challenging, given that nearly 100 journalists have been detained in Iran since the start of the protests in September. As I have said at every single council meeting since September, please speak up, speak out about the woman-life-freedom revolution, the continuing atrocities that the Islamic government is committing against the people of Iran, the children of Iran, the girls in Iran, the women in Iran, the LGBTQ community in Iran, is, 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 is a darkness that will continue to spread, and we see this darkness here in our country from the conservative right-wing extremists. So not only will we, and we should, stand up against hate and fascism in our country, but also speak loudly against violence like this, especially violence against girls in other countries, including what's happening in Iran. Please advocate in support of the MASA Act, as well as the Regime Act, which is not getting enough traction, and keep calling your elected officials at all levels and ask that they do more. And please check in on your Iranian-American friends as Noorruz comes about. We need you. I need you. This is a very hard time for everyone. And with that said, that's the end of my comments, and I, it is 11:27, and I will be adjourning tonight's meeting to our next meeting, which is March 20th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at West Hollywood Park Public Meeting Room, Council Chambers. Thank you.